Board meeting to order for March 5th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Peter Benson.
Here.
Peter Benson's present. Vince Caristo. Vince Caristo's absent. Stephanie Potts. Here. Stephanie Potts is present. Michael Houlihan.
Here.
Michael Houlihan is present. Jason Rice. Jason Rice is absent. Andy Mefford. Andy Mefford is absent. Jamie Hoffman. Jamie Hoffman's present. Niva Hassanin. Niva Hassanin is present. Dudley Improta. Dudley Improta's present. Helen Jenkins. Helen Jenkins is present. John Newman. John Newman is absent. Madam Chair, there are six members and one alternate present. Would you like to appoint the attending alternate as a voting member tonight?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a approval of the minutes for the February 19th, 2019, meeting of the board. Do we have any... Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, but I don't know where to pull it up. We...
I think you have it over there. Niva, can you speak into the microphone, please?
Sorry. Thank you. On the bottom of page eight, it refers to a comment I made regarding hazards. And the second to last line on page eight, my concern wasn't so much wildland-urban interface, but rather that the interstate and the railroad corridors provide or create some hazards that need to be taken into account in this plan. Not that we necessarily have to change the plan in any specific way, but it wasn't specifically about the wildland-urban interface, so that can be struck.
Okay. So do we have a motion to... For the amendment?
It's a friendly amendment.
To strike that second to last sentence?
Or just at the wildland-urban interface?
Okay, on page eight of the February 19th minutes. Do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get... Is there a motion on the table to approve the minutes as amended?
I still move.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the minutes for the February 19th meeting as amended, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, so let's see. We have public comment on items not on the agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on items that we will not be otherwise discussing at this meeting today? Okay. Seeing none, are there any staff comments on items not on the agenda? Staff? No? Okay, thank you. We have one public hearing this evening, and this public hearing is a continuation of the February 19th public hearing, the public hearing discussing the Missoula area mapping project. We have Andrew Hegmeyer and Christine Descaso presenting this evening, and I just wanted to note that this public hearing was closed at the February 19th meeting for public comment. So staff will be giving an update on additional comments received, any other relevant changes that have been made, and then the board will be discussing this item. It will not be open to public hearing. However, county commissioners will be... Will have this item on their agenda for a public hearing again on April 4th and then again on April 25th, should the public like to further comment. Okay, so Andrew and Christine, please take it away.
All right, thank you. I'm Andrew Hegmeyer. I'm planner with Missoula County. And this is Christine, and she's also a planner with Missoula County, and we've been working on the Missoula area land use map. As the board mentioned, the public hearing is closed, but once the planning board makes a recommendation on the land use map, there's still another hearing, and that is tentatively scheduled for April 4th at 2:00 PM, Christine? And that will be in the county commissioners' chambers, which is over in the courthouse annex in the Moes Room? Is that correct? And that will be the commissioners' public hearing. So there's still at least one more public hearing on this land use map. So since the public hearing ended, we have received a couple of comments. What we're going to do with those comments is we're going to forward them to the county commissioners. So we will... They were not forwarded to you, but they will be considered part of the public record for the county commissioners' public hearing, with the exception of a comment from Jeff, who just wanted to make a clarification that I believe if I was to summarize it correctly, you wanted to clarify that you wanted it to be... The land use designation is working lands. Is that correct?
Right.
That's a clarification on his original comment. But otherwise, we've received, I think, just... We've received two additional comments that will be forwarded to the county commissioners. So I think what we've got here is a bunch of comments from a bunch of different meanings and a bunch of different points in the process for you to rifle through. It's the role of the planning board. One of your roles as a planning board in the growth policy update is what we're doing here. To... You're the official public hearing, according to state statute. And so we think it's really important, from a procedural standpoint, that the planning board give consideration to all of the public comment that is made as a part of this hearing. And so that's why we've created this spreadsheet, this 11-by-17 spreadsheet, where we took all the comments that we had received up to February 10th, and we evaluated those comments from our perspective and from our knowledge on the project, just to give you an idea of how to consider these comments. The idea was to make it easier for you, so you don't... We don't have to actually sit there and look at every single comment and make motions on every single comment. The comments that have been made past since February 10th have not been evaluated by staff, so it will be up to the board to consider those. They should be also... You should have the ones that we received in writing. Yeah, they're in your packet up there. And some of those comments are related to comments within the packet, so we maybe don't have to specifically evaluate those comments, but some of them don't, are different. So we'll maybe want to take a look at those comments as well. And then, of course, there were the comments that were made at the last hearing, which you're all well aware of, you heard of, and they are primarily on one topic. Any questions at this point?
Thank you, Andrew. Just to clarify, because I think there's probably a lot of members of the public here who are here to see resolution on issues brought up at the last public hearing, can you just state for the record one more time what the recommendation from staff is on the Meadow West issue?
Yeah, so the recommendation from staff on that issue is to change the land use designation to rural, residential, and small agriculture.
Thank you. Anything else to add?
Do you want me to add anything else? Otherwise, I'm just... What I want the planning board to do is remember that we're a resource. We've been working on this document for... This planning project for two years. We've tons of public outreach, tons of considerations, and thought processes have been put into this. So if you have any questions, that's why we're right here. We want to help you figure out why things are the way they are. And I actually do have one additional thing I wanted to hand out that I finished up today. There were a couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting. Niva asked if we could do an analysis of some agricultural lands, and so I got that for you guys. I also jotted down the housing numbers that we had talked about, too, the units. Remember, we had that conversation. And then there was a... There were a couple of other things that staff wanted to make you aware of. There was... There was a section on climate change in the hazards section that wasn't born from public comment. It was born from our work with our sustainability coordinator at Missoula County, who's here, if you have any questions over. So because it wasn't... Didn't come from public comment, you wouldn't see it in the staff evaluation. And so we do want you to consider adding that into the plan, and I've got the language for that. And also, we've been working with the water quality district and our county attorney's office and trying to figure out how to do the land use designations for the old Smurfet Stone site right now, which is not a true superfund site, but is being treated like a superfund site. And the game plan was... Is... We kind of had a placeholder, but after working with them, we would like to see the operational unit two be designated as heavy industrial, which would shrink the amount of industrial designation in the area, because the rest of the Smurfet Stone site is those settling ponds and the trash dumps, where we don't know what the contamination levels are right now. And so we would like to see those... This is kind of odd, but we would like to see those designated as agriculture, because what that would do is it would help us justify a higher level of cleanup for those sites than if they were designated as industrial. So I've got that little memo. And when the time is right, I can walk through the agricultural thing, because that's new to you, whenever you want me to do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Christine, did you want to add anything before we jump in?
We're just available if you have questions.
Okay, great. So I would like to open up this hearing to planning board members for amendments, comments, and other considerations to the land use map from Missoula County.
Yes.
I'd just like to ask a clarification. So there's... Within the document that you guys prepared, which is really helpful, thank you, there's all these proposed changes. I guess I just wanted to see, what is our process that we're going to do tonight for walking through those? And it seems like there's a lot of good ideas in here, and so are we going to walk through each individually? Or I just don't know what... How to proceed?
Yeah. You know, I think what's been recommended by staff, and if you guys have changed your mind, please let me know, that we do walk through, you know, any proposed changes that we would like to see. And, you know, may I suggest to the board that if we would like to start with, you know, a simple amendment as staff has recommended about the Meadow West issue, so, you know, folks can go if they want to. We can, you know, kind of do that first. At the end of the night, assuming we're ready to close, we do need to do a final resolution for approval for the entire land use map and the element as well. So that's kind of the process for the night. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And I'm just wondering, just so that we don't miss certain things, do we want to sort of walk through this methodically through that? I mean, first, maybe starting to respect the people's time who have come here, but then from there, just... It might make the most sense to just go from the top through the bottom.
Totally agree. Does that sound okay with everybody else?
Yeah. Unless there are certain ones that need to be discussed, we could pull out, but if you want to go through each one.
Well, and if there's no comment, then there's no comment. We move forward, right? Okay. So I guess, you know, I was not at the last meeting. I did read through the minutes. There was obviously a lot of conversation about the Meadow West issue. Andrew, remind me one more time what the proposed staff changes, what the amendment to the land use map is.
So the land use designation as proposed in the document you're considering is neighborhood residential, which is a fairly dense land use designation. The neighborhood would like to see it as... The comments that we've received, which we've received probably about 30-some comments on this topic, we'd like to see that this one parcel designated as rural, residential, and small agriculture. And if you look on the screen... I can zoom in. We put the land use map into Google Earth. So this property right here is the chunk that is in question. So that's what's proposed. So what the suggested change would be is that.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Niva.
Why was it designated as neighborhood residential on the proposed map?
So when the highway department... Montana Department of Transportation redid Waldo Road this summer as a part of the Frontage Road, the Frenchtown-Frontage Road project. And during that time, the city extended sewer underneath Waldo Road, mainly to serve these two properties, not to serve a big area. And so when they did that, because it had sewer and there's a water system nearby just across Highway 93, it made sense from that perspective. It's unzoned right now, so there aren't limitations with current zoning on what maybe could be there in the future. Yeah, so from those infrastructure standpoints, it, you know, right next to a major transportation corridor, it didn't seem like a problem.
Yeah, go ahead.
So then your proposed change is a pretty big leap, right? Back to rural, residential, and small ag, as opposed to something that might be a little bit more dense, but, you know, and transition into the existing neighborhood? Is that... Could you explain why that?
Yeah, I think that the land use designation that we would suggest changing it to is just based off of the desire of the people that have participated, just some 30-odd comments. They're pointing to their covenants that would be one unit per two acres, roughly, which is consistent with the rural residential and the densest you could get in a rural, residential, and small agriculture land use designation.
Other comments from the board?
Want a motion? I'll make a motion that we change... Oh, is this it?
This can help you. It doesn't have to be the way you worded it. Is this the right one?
I don't... But I don't know all the numbers. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the land use map be amended so that the area north of Waldo Road that is currently designated neighborhood residential be changed to rural, residential, and small agriculture to match the existing land use in that area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Niva, for that amendment. Okay, any other comments or amendments from planning board before we kind of jump into the spreadsheet? Okay. All right, great. So what I would like to do is go through the summary of public comments and staff evaluation and specifically maybe charge the points where staff are recommending change. So that really starts on page two of the spreadsheet. So the first comment is from Benson Farm. And so, Andrew, maybe this is a comment for you. Can you explain a little bit what the recommendation that you're suggesting would be?
Yeah. Mr. Benson, in his comment noted that part of the property... Of his property is actually zoned for commercial when we had it designated for neighborhood residential. It was part of our methodology in this document to try not to move away from existing entitlements through the land use designation. And so going from commercial to residential would move away from an existing entitlement. That was actually just, you know, there's 170,000 acres, a lot of inputs. That was just an oversight. We missed it.
Okay.
And so we actually suggest that the portion of his property zoned for commercial be changed to neighborhood... The neighborhood commercial. Is that... Neighborhood center. And it actually would be true to... On a couple of other properties across the highway as well, where we missed it. And so that wasn't necessarily anything targeted towards Mr. Benson or the neighborhood properties. We just missed that part of this is zoned commercial. So here is what the land use map proposes currently. As you can see, this chunk right here is neighborhood residential, and here's the Benson's farm. And this chunk is designated as neighborhood residential. We recommend it changed to be this, which was in line with the current zoning.
Okay.
Then is the second part of his question was just generally... He's having problems with urban development around his farm, and it's putting a lot of pressure on his farm. I don't think the land use map can do anything for the urban pressures on that. But he did want to know, does this prevent me from continuing farming? And the answer is no. The land use map does not change land uses. It allows people to change land uses. It doesn't require land uses to be changed. So he can continue farming. And the third part, he talked... The third part of his question is it was about transportation issues and that the plan didn't really evaluate congestion and traffic problems. So what... And that's not... That's not what we're trying to do in this land use map, is to be the transportation plan from the city of Missoula. So what we did was we... It made us realize that in the implementation section, there really needs to be, under the coordination title, a section on how this plan and our other plans, like our transportation plan, the resiliency plan, which should soon be adopted, the PROS plan that's coming up, all need to kind of work together and evolve together. So we adopt one plan, then we make sure we evaluate our other plans, and then we go back and, you know, the transportation plan might give us information on how we should change our land use map, and the land use map helps inform the transportation plan, and it's cyclical, and this stuff keeps working together over time. And so we're recommending that that... This little blurb in here, ignore the grammatical errors in there, but we'll fix those. But this little blurb be included to kind of demonstrate that these plans work together.
Okay. How do you propose we put forward that kind of recommendation?
Well, so what I... What you might do is you might just go through these, and if you kind of agree with it, just move on. And maybe just hit on the ones you don't. Don't are on the same page, and just make motions on those.
Okay.
And then we'll make... And then you can make one big motion, like, we want to change these things, and then we accept staff's...
That's a good idea. I could have one motion to accept everything that we...
Okay, great. Well, is there any discussion on this specific amendment from staff?
Just a quick question. So has Mr. Benson had an opportunity to review your proposed change?
We've... I mean, we've had this available on the internet. We haven't been...
Okay. So you haven't heard from him was whether this...
Well, he's here if you want to ask.
Oh, okay, great. I just wondered if it was... This was a satisfactory change for Mr. Benson? The neighborhood center designation? Is he... Can we ask... Mr. Benson, would you like...
I don't really have a lot of details on what exactly it is or what in fact we would have. If I had a chance to discuss it, I would, but I can't really give you any terms.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Other discussion or questions about this staff recommendation? Okay, great. Let's go ahead and move on then to item 14, the comment from CFAC. Yeah, sorry. No, that's right. Yeah, item 14 from CFAC. And are there any... Andrew, did you want to add anything there? And if so, any changes?
This was... This came out of especially a target range area where rural residential doesn't really capture the essence of that place, because there's so much agriculture incorporated in the target range area. And so they would like to see the name... This is simply a name change. So rural residential would be called rural, residential, and small agriculture. And then the former rural, residential, and small agriculture would become rural, residential, and agriculture. That's all they were... That's all they were looking for.
Okay, great. Any other comments or questions from planning board? Okay, great. Moving on to item 15, request change of neighborhood residential to small area of commercial along the interstate. Looks like you're proposing a change to the map there, Andrew.
Yep, I can show it to you real quick. So it's... This is just northeast of Reserve Street and the interchange right there. This is that hillside. There's the Doggy Daycare and a couple other small business operations. This is what we had proposed, neighborhood residential. This is Dagel's chunk right here. He actually owns all this and some up here, too. And he suggests... This was his recommendation. He said, "This is what I'd like to see." And we said, "Sure."
Okay, yeah. Along the I-90 corridor? Other comments or questions from planning board on this issue? No? Okay, great. Moving on to item... Let's see. Item number 20.1. Looks like this is a comment from MBIA with related to density. Andrew, do you have comments about that?
Yeah, they... So they have a number of... This is a pretty complex comment. You know, they have a broad... A broad statement. Item number one is just a broad statement about including more housing, not necessarily anything specific, but four, five, and six, we identified as maybe something potentially that we could change. Number four was expand residential and orchard homes, Clemens, from Third to South. We don't necessarily think we want to expand residential and the orchard homes much more than... So what we've got... So basically, in this orchard homes area, this is... Our game plan for this area was the city's got some infrastructure, sewer and water in the orchard homes area. As development has been occurring in the orchard homes area, it's all been... Due to the existing zoning in the county, which is one unit per acre, which doesn't allow a whole lot of development in this area, the city's zoning allows a lot more. So when people want to develop, they annex into the city. They take advantage of that infrastructure. The city requires them annex. So all the development that's been occurring in here recently has been annexing in the city. And so we expect that trend to continue. So this is one of those areas, when we talk about the big picture, you know, the big idea, where, you know, what our role is, we... Our role in this area is to facilitate and coordinate with the city. So what we did was we tried to match our land use designations for this area to the city's land use designations and their growth policy. And so the land use designations in this area do so. So we don't want to necessarily go more than what the city has in this area. With the... There was an exception where the city has a strip along South Avenue designated as mixed use, like a neighborhood mixed use, and we had it designated as a residential. So we do think that in that methodology, and according to this comment, we can suggest a neighborhood center designation, which is our lower, lighter-scale mixed-use land use designation. And that would make it completely consistent with the city's growth policy in that area.
Is that a recommendation you've articulated in the recommendations?
Yeah, that's what we... Based off of the MBIA's comment to increase density in the orchard homes area, this would be the opportunity to do so in that spot.
Great. I also see that there has been a proposal from staff to change planned neighborhoods to working lands as it relates to comment 20.6.
Okay, so this one is a big one, and this relates to both the MBIA's comments and to Montana Fish, Wildlife, and Parks comments. So it's back up to near Dagel's place, up north of Reserve. This brown area, it's almost a section. It's almost 600 and some... You know, it's like 640 acres or something. It's like 620. We had designated as planned neighborhood. So planned neighborhood... The concept behind planned neighborhood is these are locations near the city that we don't expect to develop today. We don't have the infrastructure to develop these areas. But we don't want these chopped up into one acre, or five acre, or 10 acre pieces. We want to preserve them in big chunks. It's kind of like a reserve. So in the long term, maybe in... So in the long term, maybe in 10, 15 years, when the infrastructure is in place, we want them to develop at an urban scale. We, so what we, what we're trying to do is we're trying not to completely encircle Missoula with one and five acre tracts. Because what, what happens if we completely encircle Missoula with one and five acre tracts? We lose our ability to grow in a consistent urban orderly fashion. So we got to find some spots where we say, no, this is, this is saved for later. This was one of those spots where we thought that we could save this for some sort of later development. What MBIA pointed out is this is on a, it's on a hill. It's about 500, 600 feet over the valley floor. It, it's not actually terribly steep. There are some steep sections to it, but it's got some flat places on it too, which is why we identified it. But they just said, you know, because of these terrain features and the challenges of getting sewer and water up here and building roads up here, it's really unrealistic that this is going to develop at that type of a density some point in the future. That's what they are just pointing out. But then when we saw Fish Wildlife and Parks comments saying that in big snow years, which maybe this is a big snow year, this is a pretty important spot for elk winter range and also it's a really, it's a good upland habitat. And remember when we talked about the three habitat types that were really important in this area that we wanted to try to protect? The upland habitat, those upland grassland habitats were one type, you know what I mean? So we did suggest changing this from planned neighborhood to working lands.
Okay.
It doesn't, and maybe in 30, 40, 50 years, if we want to revisit it, it's still there this way, you know, it's, it's, it doesn't get chopped up into little one acre or five acre pieces.
Okay. Comments or questions from the planning board about this issue on item basically 20.1?
I, I don't know when the time to comment and I don't want to lose it. So 20.5 is related to 27.
Okay.
So I can wait till 27 or.
Let's talk about it now.
Actually, well, yeah, I think 27 is pretty detailed, right? So I think we should flag that.
Wait till 27.
Well, either way, but I def, I want to talk more about that as well.
Okay. So it's about expanding the commercial, they expanded it and then they want to expand it again. Looks like the flood plain was addressed, but then I have questions about riparian area. I don't know if FWP has any comments and then agricultural land in there. And I don't know if territorial made the comment, if they want to address it again or FWP, or if you want to address why you went ahead and changed it.
Yeah, I'll, I can, I know quite a bit about it, but not everything about it. So when we get to 27 or whatever the number is, I'll.
We can jump in. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Dudley. We'll revisit that. Yes, Peter.
So I'm trying to keep, kind of keep track when we decide to move something from agricultural or residential to a more broadly described zone or whatever we want to call these things, planning. And I'm worried that there are things like agriculture that are losing out in the equation. Yeah, not, the, the whole argument of not in my backyard. You know, I paid good money for this particular piece of property and I don't want it zoned something else. How are we as a group going to keep track of the general principle that we are preserving agricultural land, we are preserving riparian land, we are preserving habitat as we start making changes in this? I don't, I don't, I don't know if there's one answer for this, but if you have a suggestion or how we should look at that, I'm interested.
Yeah, that's a great question. Peter, Andrew, do you want to take a stab at that? My, my, I guess I'll just say my first reaction to that is, you know, that's one of the reasons why it's so important to have these kind of specific interest groups like CFAC who are monitoring agriculture loss and, and, you know, FWP, as I submitted in my public comment, did an incredibly admirable and thorough job in assessing kind of the wildlife impact of this land use designation map. And I, I would, I would like to see more of that incorporated. You know, how we track that specifically, you know, I think that's up to staff.
I mean, in terms of what's, what was forwarded to you originally as proposed, generally the comments actually, for the most part, are, are going from development to less development, like we just looked at, you know? So I don't, I don't really think this, in this, you know, this situation. So I think it's going to be conceptual. I think when you're looking at each one of these comments, you need to think about that.
Sorry, I don't mean to give any particular greater value to one or the other. But if we have a whole bunch of different choices that we think are important, from, you know, dense population agriculture, riparian area, commercial area, are we keeping track of when we move one thing to one category, what we're going to replace it with? Because, or is anybody paying attention to how much general commercial property or do we care how much general commercial or agricultural land there is there now?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have matrix, like a metrics or matrix for measuring that necessarily. I, I think it's more of a gut check in some of these things. You know, one of the things, at least for commercial, what, what, one of the things we identified was that due to trends in commercial land use, we, we worked on this in the planning area profile, the majority of the commercial that we're going to see in the future isn't going to be strip malls along the highway anymore. It's going to be mixed use in the urban car. So we don't really expect the need for a ton of commercial, but we do expect still some. I think the county will still become, be a major provider of industrial lands. So that could be a concern is if we lose too much industrial land. And then for housing, we've got, there's a lot of housing available on this map. Our, our impediment to housing is infrastructure.
So you're saying that basically we have lots of room to maneuver in here without losing some important piece of or type of.
So I, I think there's going to be specific instances where values might conflict. In that, we've already, you know, Dudley and Neva have already mentioned it on that 27 that's coming up. That might be one of those specific instances. And there's going to be a few more, I think, too, where the land use map might conflict with the values and, and those things we need to give special consideration to and special discussion to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? I guess general comments, but also just comments on 20.1. Staff recommendations. Okay, seeing none, let's move on to one small thing. Yeah.
I just want to correct that. I think just for point of order that those are actually staff recommendations, 20.4, 20.5 and 20.6 rather than 21.
Yes, thank you.
20.5 we're leaving out.
Yeah, so 20.4 and 20.6, I suppose.
Yes, that's right.
Discuss in conjunction with those.
Okay. Okay, so that takes us to item number 25. Swartz requests rural residential and small ag rather than neighborhood residential.
That's Meadows West.
Yeah.
We got, we covered that one.
That's Meadows West. Okay. I was going to say, we just talked about Waldo Road. Okay, so that has been amended. Okay, next is 26.1, Taylor request for target range and you cited recommended change on comment 14, so I'm assuming that addresses that issue.
CFAC's comment.
Yeah, okay, great. I guess before I move on from the CFAC comment, any other comments or questions on, on that? Okay, great. Okay, so that takes us to item number 27. So this was going to be the flood plain and permissions for community commercial.
Yeah. So here's the history on this. I'll bring it up on the map. So Missoula County in general, in this planning area, regulates the 500-year flood plain. And one of our key points in this plan was, you know, we talked about steering growth away from hazards. We don't want to see a bunch of growth happening in our flood plains. And the, the resiliency piece that we're learning more about as we're going through resilient, the resiliency plan is that the chances are because of changes in precipitation regimes, changes in temperature regimes, that our flooding events are probably going to occur a lot like last year. They come early and they come bigger than they have in the past. That's something we're anticipating in the future. And so the, that means, so that's, that's, that means these flood, we really want to keep these flood plains clear, right? And so when we were, we were mapping this area, we saw, oh, this is 500-year flood plain. Let's designate this as agriculture because that was usually what we used in the flood plains to try to keep the development pressures out. TLI came in and, and, you know, they, they sat down with us and they worked us through this property and what we, they pointed out that in this location, there had been some additional studies done and some LIDAR data, which is some really fancy ways to measure topography really accurately. Because of these study, these flood studies that have been done in this LIDAR, this, in this location, the 500-year flood plain was actually a non-regulatory. And I checked with our flood plain guy, Todd, and he said, yep, nope, this is, this is the exception to the rule, this spot. We've done these studies, we've got this LIDAR. If you can just demonstrate that you were above the 100-year flood plain, we will not regulate you. So that means in this area that's above the 100-year flood plain, we didn't have that justification, then we, then we, for automatically defaulting to agriculture. And so we went to the next step, which is what's the existing zoning? Because we always, we don't want to try to move away from existing zoning or, you know, try to get too far away from people's, we, we don't want to take away entitlements unless there's a really, really significant reason to do so, like flooding. So in this spot, we've got a, one of these part one zoning districts that is a citizen-initiated zoning. And it might actually be easiest if I turn on the parcel data. So these are, these are sort of the affected properties. This, this property, this property, there's a series of four properties here, this one and I think, no, I think this one's out, that one's not. So if we turn on the zoning, which takes a second, so stand by, hold with me here. What we've got is this weird checkerboard of zoned areas and unzoned areas. So, and then within this zoning district 39, there's some commercially zoned properties and some residentially zoned properties. And Christine, do you know the zoning better than I do? Do you know which ones are commercially zoned?
And there's also some agriculturally zoned property here too. And I think if we zoom in, that label should show up. I believe this is ag.
That's outside of the spot in question though. There you go.
There's ag, yeah. So there's ag and then we have commercial here and residential to the west, east.
And what's the blue line?
Oh, that's just, that's just the highlighted property boundary. So that's actually not part of the property we're really considering. It's this, this, these four right here, this one, I think this one too. And so, so we've got some, so if we, then if we defaulted to the zoning, then we would have this kind of patchwork of, you know, some rural residential, which we now call rural residential and small agriculture after the discussion. So one, this generally of like one unit per acre type level. And then we would have some commercial, either neighborhood center or highway commercial. And then we would have this area that's on zone where we'd have to make a call. And the, the, the comment was like, why don't we kind of just bring all these land use designations together so they are consistent and then we get a more orderly development pattern? So let's go all commercial or we could go all residential, they want to go all commercial. And, and, you know, we said, sure. There's a few spots where I, you know, I think there's some judgment calls that we've made that we really don't have a, you know, we just, like this is what they wanted, so we said, okay. We're kind of a toss-up and I think this is an example of that.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Other comments from planning board members on this issue? Dudley, do you want to kick this off?
Again, I just got a couple, you know, agriculture I worry about and then also riparian area. And then I, I'll just quote from FWP's, if we could only have size one natural resource I had to protect in Missoula Valley, we would strongly recommend Missoula County do everything in its power to protect riparian areas. And they called them biodiversity hotspots. The other consideration about Buck House Bridge is that, you know, a group of Missoula, FWP, Missoula County, everybody met, Three Rivers Collaborative, including businesses, to talk about managing our tuber hatch in the summer. And, you know, that Buck House Bridge is heavily used recreationally as well. So I, I just have questions about the commercial along the river. Of course, there is some, and then expanding it. So I don't know if we need to make a motion on that or I need to make a motion on that at this point, but, or when that would be appropriate.
Well, you certainly can make a motion if you want. I, I suspect there's additional comments, so maybe we should just kind of keep talking about it.
No, I didn't know if you wanted to wait till the end or.
Yeah, okay. Other comments from planning board members?
Was that area covered in the FWP comments? The particular area and which page?
Under wetlands, stream and river corridors and riparian areas.
Under which one?
It's under, it's under wetlands, stream and river corridors and riparian areas.
This is why I tell my students to put page numbers on their documents. I guess I'm wondering if this particular area was.
Third page.
It wasn't one of the spots where FWP focused on.
Well, I guess I'd like to speak to this a little bit because I worry a little bit about commercial creep along that area and this land is prime agricultural soil. It's one of the largest pieces kind of left out there. And agricultural soil does provide some buffer against flooding and, as well as obviously being available for future use perhaps. So I'm not convinced of a compelling reason to, to change this to commercial. I'm willing to be convinced if someone has a really good reason why we need more commercial right there. But otherwise, it seems like simply an attempt to move agricultural land into development.
Okay, other questions or comments? Yes, Stephanie?
I was wondering if you could just zoom out a little bit?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a picture of, and then, okay, so this area, I'm also concerned about the loss of agricultural land. I understand that you guys are weighing so many things within this and so many different comments, but it also feels like, you know, just saying yes because that's the easiest route might not be the best choice here. And also with the wildlife area, I'm very familiar with this piece of land and this section of land because I take hundreds of fourth graders out to do field trips at McLeve Flat every year and I, this is an area that's rich in wildlife and wildlife are coming through from, the, the river bends around and they're coming in from McLeve Flat and Blue Mountain, crossing down to the Bitteru River. And I just, I think that adding more commercial there is not going to be the best choice for our working lands and it's also, I'm concerned about the impacts it'll have on the, the, because not only is riparian areas, but the other thing that FWP mentioned needing to protect that I think is relevant here is those corridors that wildlife need to, to move through. This is a really important area for a lot of different, gosh, I've seen a great gray owl on Great Blue Mountain Road before. So, yeah, I guess I, I understand why this recommendation is being made. I am concerned about it though.
Other comments?
You kind of had a compromised position, right?
Yeah, that's.
And so maybe explain that a little bit. And so maybe explain that a little bit.
Yeah, so the, there's a, I found it. I'm sure this is frustrating for TLI, watching me fumble this. This property right here is zoned for commercial. So in the land use map, what's proposed, no, it's not. This is originally an agriculture, because I thought it was in the flood plain, it's outside the flood plain. It's currently zoned commercial, so even if we designated for agriculture or something else, it doesn't change the zoning, they're still going to be able to use it as a commercial use. It's undeveloped right now, but they would be able to develop it as commercial. So it kind of makes sense just to make that one be commercial.
Is that the trans, sorry, is that trans solution? Is that roughly where we are?
This is, this is like Fred's, the appliance store, and then there's a big irrigation canal right here. And then this is the, the subject property, which, if I zoom in here, you can see a little bit better that it's undeveloped. So there's Fred's, the irrigation canal. This is zoned commercial right now.
Well, and we approved a subdivision just up above there, not long ago.
Not long ago. So this property right here...
Actually, I voted against it, but...
This property right here is prime, is zoned agriculture. There's a vet clinic on it right now, right here. So they requested, we, we received more than one comment on this side. They requested it be zoned or designated commercial as well to protect their agricultural business, or, I mean, their, their veterinarian business. And then these are unzoned, and they kind of have a hodgepodge of uses on there right now. So they're not that far off from commercial as it is.
But in reality, even if it was zoned commercial, or agriculture, you're not going in there and stopping an existing business that's...
No, that, no, that's correct, yeah.
That, that business isn't threatened from the land use planning map.
Yeah. So the, and, and, long story short, the, sort of the compromise was to, instead of, the comments want the entire property's designated commercial, so come, they come out way out here into what is the 100-year flood plain and a number of places. What we went with was just designating the area outside the 100-year flood plain as That was kind of the midpoint that we saw.
Comments? I do have two questions, Andrew. Please remind me, I can't remember, does the Blue Mountain neighborhood, community folk, do they have their own kind of neighborhood plan?
There's not an official neighborhood plan in the respect that we, you know, adopted neighborhood.
Like target range or something?
Yeah. They have this, the part-one zoning, which are, part-one zoning is really hard to change. It's sort of cemented in place.
Okay. I have some major concerns, you know, some that Stephanie has pointed out with regards to wildlife corridors. But I also have just general infrastructure concerns out here. You know, I mean, we've been seeing proposals for subdivisions in this community, and, you know, they're not necessarily connected to city sewer, and they're having to like invest in these really expensive, you know, kind of water mitigation systems. And anyway, it just seems like the topography and the, you know, how the river bends in this part of, of the county, it's just like not ready to support higher density. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with a lot of what's been said today about this. I guess any other comments or questions? And if not, then maybe, you know, we should have a motion.
I could...
Territorial, I want to say. Can I clarify my comments?
Yes, please, Jason, come on up.
Wherever you want to, I can, I'm assuming they want to hear you.
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify...
Jason, can you just identify yourself for the record?
Jason Rice with Territorial Land Works. Going back to that map, to clarify the comments again, and I think on, you know, I understand where people are leaning right now, but the growth policy is, is, won't change anything that can be done out there today. Right now, this parcel out here can develop with, in theory, 80 residential units. It's zoned one, one dwelling unit per acre. This is unzoned, and actually, trans solutions is outside the red area right here, and they have a flood plain permit to operate there, and they're not going to leave, but they're not going to ever become zoned. If you adopt this growth policy, they'll just stay unzoned forever. And so that's the concern that we brought up, is by bringing a growth policy that more closely matches what's likely to occur in an area, you're going to actually get better controls and better facilitation for future development that's more meaningful and orderly. Whereas if you leave it, if you just change this to all, if you went all green, no one's ever going to come in with a zoning application. They're going to continue doing what they can do with their current entitlements, because they're going to get the highest and best use out of that, you know, for their property. By bringing it into something that makes more sense and brings in more orderliness, then you'll get what you want. And the fact is that these are already zoned and the uses already exist. There's actually a lot more uses here. You can see the photos that we had in our current, our original, the aerial photos are a little out of date here. There's a lot more going on here than this. There's an RV park, there's some storage unit type sheds being manufactured here. And so, I mean, we had one client wanted to put 80 units out there, and, well, actually wanted to do 160 with a rezone, but, you know, we steered him away from that. From an infrastructure standpoint, we turned in the groundwater monitoring data, and groundwater monitoring is not a problem. In fact, it's better down here than it is up on top. So, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, we don't see a problem at all for the kind of growth that we want to put there. So there's photos in there, encourage you to look at them. It's, I, I think the biggest thing I saw was that just to get some continuity, so you don't have this hodgepodge of stuff that's, you know, going to look a little bit like the outskirts of Lolo if you don't do something, you know, with some real meaning to it.
Thank you, Jason. Other comments or questions from the planning board? Well, what's your flavor? Do we want to make a motion to amend the staff recommendation, or are we feeling like we can agree with the staff recommendation and we'll just move forward and include that as part of the overall approval?
Well, I'd make a motion to not extend, Jason, as always, makes a great logical argument, but I make, I would make a motion not to extend commercial.
Okay, do we have a second?
On the land use plan.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, it seems to me that, if I'm reading this correctly, I can barely see it, that the, I mean, the existing zoning that is commercial, we ought to make that commercial, it's already zoned, right? This piece here, 4601, that doesn't seem to be too radical since it's, so I'm okay with that part.
Yeah, the motion was not to expand commercial use on the planning map.
But isn't that section not in the current, the proposed land use map?
As, as submitted, this, this is the project, the property that's zoned commercial, the proposed land use map we submitted to is, is for agriculture. So roughly, this area is actually commercial, zoned for commercial currently.
And I have one other question, maybe Jason can help her, or any of you. This long, narrow piece that you're, that looks like it's in the city? No? According to your exhibit?
That just means it's unzoned, I believe, in that exhibit.
Okay.
The clearer coloring means it's unzoned.
Because it's, it's by black boundary instead of red. Okay, gotcha, never mind. I would propose that we at least allow that extension of the commercial into the existing commercially zoned area.
Sorry, Niva, are you wanting to make a friendly amendment to Dudley's motion?
I'm asking for a friendly amendment, Dudley.
Is that acceptable, Dudley? Okay, great. Other discussion on the motion as it stands with Niva's friendly amendment?
So, one point of clarification, so the unzoned property that goes up, what is happening? What are we doing with that? From trans solution relating to UMS, yeah, that piece. What are we recommending for that?
The current proposal is for this to be agriculture.
Okay. And I don't see virtue.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, I agree with you, Peter. I, you know, there's already, to Jason's point, there's already well-established businesses there, they're not going to, you know, return the land to agriculture use.
And to Jason's point, that rather not look like the outskirts of Lolo, but if there was some way that we can recommend regulation, I think that would be a virtue.
Okay, well, we do have a motion that has been seconded on the, on the floor, so we could vote now if we like. People want to vote it down or make additional...
Do you want to make an amendment to include that?
Friendly amendment.
Okay.
Include that as part as well.
Dudley, do you accept that?
No, that's not true. There's a lot of land there.
Is that okay? Okay?
So would, would you like to make it for the entire property or staff recommendation, which is just the 500, or just the 100-year flood plain?
Just the 100-year.
Well, then there's no rule amendment, we're going to go with the staff recommendation.
My understanding was that, yeah, there's the upper parcel, though.
The upper parcel.
That is not included.
My understanding was it was more of like this section that's already zoned as commercial, and then that section that's not zoned at all.
Right, but part of the area that is not zoned at all, the staff did not recommend a commercial designation because it isn't, it's within the 100-year flood plain. So only basically the northern, or the southern half, as we've got it here. This is staff, this is what we recommended based on the comments. This is what we recommended originally, if we take out that. So that's our original recommend, our original proposal. This is our recommendation based off of comments. And right now, the motion is to essentially look like this, but then we've amended it to now look like this.
Which is across the river. So you got both sides leading Buck House Bridge, no? No, we're way upstream over here. I got confused because you said it's new, that, um, commercial designation at Buck House Bridge, that's...
I think the Buck House Bridge.
Because Buck House Road is...
So, um, the Buck House Bridge is right here. And we just use that term generically because it's in the general area. You could also say Blue Mountain Road, but it's...
You mean, you're...
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a ways.
Right.
You know, 3,000, half a mile. It's a half a mile or so from the bridge.
Confused because you, you know, you say, "commercial designation at Buck House Bridge."
Okay, given the additional clarification, Dudley, would you still like to have your amendment?
I could come out and draw the amendment because now we're going with staff recommendation.
You're withdrawing the amendment?
Am I confused here?
Get your motion. Yeah, you're, we can vote it down if you would want us to all vote it down, that's fine.
I got a little confused.
We can draw if we're going, okay, the staff recommendation.
Okay.
No, wait.
Your original motion was to not expand commercial, now it seems like we're leaning that way.
I thought, but if you, the staff's recommendation would also include some of this agricultural land, and what makes sense to me is to have, I think, the existing commercial zoning included, and then whatever portion that is, of the narrow strip there that's still in the, that's outside the 100-year flood plain.
Okay, so that would...
Would that work?
That would look roughly like this. This is totally an estimate, but...
I like that idea, too.
That's different than your recommendation.
Yeah, that's different than our recommendation. I can turn on my reckon...
Okay.
Second, did you, no?
The river is from the river, you had it to choose by recent evidence. It's a half a mile from the river.
It's a half a mile from the bridge.
That part is not by the river, I agree.
Stephanie, did you have a comment?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay, we need to make a new motion because Dudley withdrew his motion.
You guys want to make one on this?
I'll make a motion if you're withdrawing it. I motion that we accept those ones that are there. I don't know how to, but that the property that is already zoned commercial and the property that's unzoned to the point where it's above the 100-year flood plain be, sorry, yeah, be put on the land use map as commercial, and the rest remain as agriculture.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on the motion that Stephanie just proposed? Yes, Michael?
So basically, what we're saying, everything from the river to this red is still agriculture or flood plain? We're not changing that.
Right. Right.
So you can't build commercial there.
We're not extending commercial designation.
It's just the land you plan.
And some of it is zoned agricultural already.
This is what would be forwarded to the commissioners, essentially. So we've got Blue Mountain Road right here, we've got Fred's Appliances, we've got the hill with the irrigation canal, we've got a little bit of commercial here, that's, that's zoned commercial, a little bit of commercial here that's unzoned. And then we'd have, you know, a good, close to half mile of agriculture and working lands before we got to Buck House Bridge.
Is that all currently unzoned?
Some of it, there's a good section right here that's, that's zoned residential, one unit per acre.
Is that ZD 39? That's one, that's one per acre? Oh, okay, ouch.
Other comments or questions on the motion?
I didn't, I guess I didn't realize that it's already zoned one per, well, it may, with the zoning, may change. No, it won't. We'll see.
Okay, are we ready for a vote on the motion as proposed? All right, so all those in favor of Stephanie's motion to include those parcels in the commercial land use designation and the remainder that staff proposed as agricultural, say aye? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's Jamie and Michael are nays, and we didn't have any abstentions, right? Okay. Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. I think that takes care of item 27. So the next item on the list is item 29, WGM Group requesting community mixed use rather than neighborhood center near Reserve Street, south of I-90. And it looks like staff is recommending changing neighborhood center to community mixed use.
Yeah, that's correct. Community mixed use is maybe a little bit more intense than the neighborhood center. It also is intended to be master planned. This is a fairly large lot, 82 acres, a chunk of property, 82 acre, 82 acres. Could, master planning could be a good thing for it. And the community mixed use is a lot, it's more in line with what the city's land use designation is for the spot, so it seemed to make sense.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
This is an old gravel pit, by the way, it's been reclaimed.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Any comments or questions from planning board members on item number 29? Okay, seeing none, we will move forward to item 30, Bishop Request from Neighborhood Residential to Rural Residential. That's also Waldo Road, that's part of Meadow West, right?
Yeah, you know what, I made a mistake on 25, that is not Waldo Road.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, wait, Christine's monitoring me, never mind.
Okay, so to clarify, 25 is Meadow West, and so is 30. Is that correct? Okay, great. So that has been amended already. Okay, which takes us to item number 32, Richardson, Change Agricultural Designation to Commercial in Area Near Intersection of Blue Mountain Road and Highway 93 South.
That is comment 27.
Comment 27, okay, thank you. Next on the list is item number 33. Comment 27. Okay, thank you. Next on the list is item number 33.1 to 34.4. Looks like you're proposing a variety of changes to text.
Yeah, I have to kind of remember what... Okay, these are related to Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks comments in terms of our responses. So let me kind of scroll down here and refresh my memories. This is, there's a lot of stuff going on. So there's sort of a package of changes that I have here. I'm sorry, this is, I've kind of forgotten exactly what we're recommending. So let me, just give me a few minutes to kind of figure it out. Christine, if you've got it figured out, jump in.
In the meantime, does anybody have kind of some pre-prepared questions for item number 33 and 34? A lot of this has to do with the Missoula County Airport Authority and that whole section that has now been annexed to the city.
Okay, I've got it figured out now.
Okay, go ahead, Andrew.
So the first change, the comment was related to identifying funding sources for agricultural easements. Good idea, wrong plan. That's the PROS Plan, which is going to be coming up pretty soon. So what we said was no, we don't need to do that in this plan because there is a plan the county is working to develop that works on that. However, we can make that change about coordination and the implementation steps, how this plan relates to other plans. So as the PROS Plan evolves, our plan evolves, our plan helps the PROS Plan evolve, et cetera, et cetera. So that was sort of the change that we're recommending there. And then on number four, it was, the comment was related to developing impact fees to discourage development in hazard areas, which isn't allowed under state statute. So can't really do that. But the comment related to climate change is the concern there that we do think the plan didn't emphasize well enough. And so later on in the Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks comments, we, in that role of the county section of the document that talks about what the county is supposed to do in developing and thinking about our community, actually, I'm sorry, in the reality section. So we've got, we've got our values and those came from the public through this process. We've got our ideas on growth and development. Those came from the public through this process. So those are great, but there's also just realities that we have to face as a community that maybe didn't come up in the process, but we need to state on things like we have a limited land base with, you know, mountains and stuff around us. Climate change. We're suggesting that climate change be identified as a reality. And that, so we've got some discussion in, and it'll be kind of highlighted in the Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks comment, that our environment is what the heading we're suggesting, our environment be identified as a reality, which includes wildlife habitat, the fact that we have wildlife, that we live with wildlife, and that we also are going to have to live with climate change. So that's kind of how we wanted to address this comment.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board about this comment? Yes, Stephanie?
I have a question just about the PROS comment. So I think, first of all, I'm in full support of coordination and that language in there. I guess I just wanted to make sure that I'd stated that it sometimes concerns me when we say all of our easements, our conservation easements aimed at park recreation, open space and trails. I think there's some wisdom in a comment that says agricultural easements sometimes are a separate thing and are a different thing. And so I, I don't know if there's a space for language. Maybe it's not the place for it, but I think it's, I'd just like to make the comment that I don't want to see agriculture and those efforts get pushed aside and the efforts to get more recreation areas or things like that, which are very important, but that's the focus of that plan. There's cities and counties that have robust agricultural easement programs that have robust things are because they have systems in place to make it happen and they don't just pass it off to parks and recreation and those kind of, you know, not that parks and recreation aren't important. I think they're great. They're not agriculture, though. So that does, I hear where they're coming from there and I'm not sure that it's just, I don't know if it's addressed by that.
I guess, we have an entire program that focuses on conservation easements and this is their plan, the PROS Plan.
I understand what you're saying. I'm saying that conservation easements and agricultural easements are often linked. Sometimes they're not, and I just wanted to make the comment in a public sphere that I hope that the county commissioners consider that.
Okay.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, then we will move on to item number 35.1 through 35.3. This is Mattson, supportive of more proactive zoning and infrastructure planning, expanding live make designation to all of West Riverside and increasing the color difference for the ORR and heavy industrial designations. Looks like that's what it is. Are there other comments or questions about this issue?
No, I'll just say that I thought I heard pretty clearly from the folks in West Riverside that they do want to expand this live make designation. And I think that makes a lot of sense for that community, so I'm happy to support them.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then we can move on to item 36, Mattson, expand live make to all of West Riverside. I think we just talked about that. Okay. Next would be item number 40, Haber, 40.1, plan fails to mention climate change, which I think you've now spoken on. 40.2, rural residential designation isn't compatible with compact development. And 40.3, Figure Six fails to mention riparian areas. Andrew, it looks like you're seeking to incorporate more of the comments and ideas from the FWP proposal. Did you want to speak on that a little bit?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, so the, okay, so the fish wildlife, the crux of the Fish Wildlife and Parks comments, as I discussed last time, that is that we've got these three really important habitat types for wildlife in the planning area. And the first and foremost is the streams and riparian areas. So by, we're not suggesting that maybe Figure Six of this document incorporate or mention riparian areas. What we're saying is that, that as we get down to the Fish Wildlife and Parks comments, you'll see that we need to highlight in the role of the county that protecting these three types of wildlife habitats, working to protect these three types of wildlife, which would incorporate riparian areas, so...
Right. And it looks like you're proposing just a change to the text.
Yeah.
As proposed, yeah. Any other comments or questions on this item? Okay, moving on to page eight. Let's see, the first two, let's see, FWP M1 and FWP M3 are related to the Blackfoot River Wildlife Movement Corridor. I guess I'm just going to put that out there. Does anybody have any comments or questions about what they're proposing? Because I think you're proposing to address that.
What we can, yeah.
Yeah. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, that takes us down to FWP M5, Laval and Butler Creek Wildlife Movement Corridors. Looks like you're proposing to add text addressing the importance of riparian buffer zones. Any other comments or questions from planning board on that? Okay, seeing none. That takes us to FWP M6, FWP M7. Again, these are changes to text with regards to riparian buffer areas. Comments or questions? Nope. Okay. Then that takes us to page nine. FWP M9, FWP M10. This is staff updating language on riparian areas. We can just say we agree with all of these, too. Doesn't matter, but... Okay, no other changes proposed. Let's see, FWP M14, change planned neighborhood designation to working lands. Is that one that we needed to talk about, Andrew?
We've already discussed this one.
Okay.
Yeah, with the...
Oh, the winter outrage.
MBIA's comments, yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to page 10. That takes us to FWP M19, Marshall Creek Movement Corridor and Stream Restoration. Staff is proposing to add language about the importance of riparian areas and change currently zoned for one unit per five acres to rural residential and small agriculture.
Yeah, there was an area where we were suggesting higher density than the current zoning allows. If it's an important wildlife corridor, we can go back to what the current zoning is.
Okay.
Kind of idea.
Comments or questions about that? Okay, great. Page 11. We can go through them in more detail, but the following, FWP M22, FWP M23 are all related to the importance of addressing riparian areas. Andrew, FWP M24, this is that Smurfet Stone Superfund site. You've spoken about that. Do you want to add anything else about working with the Water Quality District?
Yeah, I think the proposal that we have in the handout that I had, which would, let me show it so the public can see. This is what's proposed originally that we forwarded to you, which there's, there's this creek bottom that kind of comes through here and kind of dissipates into the ether of the settling ponds, as well as just the fact that the original floodplain of the river was probably further to the east than it is today. And it's impounded by settling ponds. So Fish Wildlife and Parks commented on that. And based off of those comments and our discussions with the county attorney and our Water Quality District here, we were recommending focusing on pulling the industrial back to operational unit two, which is a thing that we're using if you're involved with the EPA cleanup at all. This is where all, it's hard to see, but this is, this is where all the infrastructure is still intact. At the mill site, it would allow the county, it would allow the, this is the area where the current landowner can do things today. And so this would allow the current, the landowner to do some things, which would be great for the county because then we would get tax income coming in again, while the rest of the operational units would be designated as agriculture, which would help advocate for a higher level of cleanup. And this would also sort of address the flood, or the comments of Fish Wildlife and Parks with the movement corridor here through the creek bottom and pulling that industrial farther away from the floodplain.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to page 12. So on page 12, I'm just going to open it up to the board if there are specific questions. Staff are suggesting just updating language to reflect the importance of riparian buffer zones.
I, I'd like to...
Go ahead, Niva.
Ask some questions about this area.
Is this related to a specific item?
Right, FWP M31?
Oh, we haven't even gotten there. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were there.
No, we are moving right along. Okay. Anything else? M26 through M30, I guess I'll say.
Okay, let's see.
No? Okay, great. So, Niva, you are up.
Well, actually, I'm a little confused by the maps in the Fish Wildlife and Parks. And I'm trying to kind of look at the area west of town and I guess it's Laval and Butler Creek areas and the sand and the area near Desha. I guess I'm just, I'm curious about, you know, the Fish Wildlife and Parks is concerned about these corridors. And so your basic recommendation in all these is that we should address the importance of the riparian areas. Are there any areas that you think that might better protect the wildlife in that area if we were to change the land use designation? Because some of this land is zoned, randomly zoned out there, and it's also a lot of prime agricultural soils. And it seems like it comes up in several of the maps from Fish Wildlife and Parks, both the sand, I'm getting the mix up, sand hills, as well as the Desha Road area and so on. So could you speak to that, Andrew?
So I believe you're mainly talking about this area just west of the airport, which is, we commonly call it Grass Valley, correct? And it's east of Desha. I guess some, this is Desha right here. So it's a little bit east and west. We've got a couple of really interesting things going on here. And let me turn this off. Well, first of all, this area is all zoned for one unit per acre and five units per acre. And that was done back in the day. I don't, I wasn't a part of it. Can't take credit. We've got this infirmial water, like stream system here. So this is, this is a ground, like the water comes up through the ground, right? It's not spring melt from snowball or something. And that means it's warm and it stays open. I would put money on it if you went out there right now, it's open. Maybe not with all the cold we've had just in the last few weeks, but I bet you most of the winter this was open. So it's really important to, with the waterfowl and species of animals and birds that need open water. So it's really unique. And then we've also got this juxtaposition of these, these are these clay benches. And we've got these infirmial draws that have, sometimes have water in them, sometimes they don't, with these great riparian infirmial habitats in them. So they're, you know, these are like alder bushes and they're really thick bushes and stuff like that. And then we've got upland habitat, grassland habitat around it. And so we've got these really unique combination of habitat types. And so the Audubon Society in our outreach effort identified that in this property, they've seen, they've seen every single species of raptor that lives in Montana on this, right here, at one point or another. So this is all zoned right now for one unit per acre. And then down here, it's one unit per acre and five units per acre. But it's, and then Niva's also right, it is prime agricultural soil, a lot of it. And so the comments from Fish Wildlife and Parks and from Audubon Society and from stakeholders through this process, like, would have liked to see this area be less dense, but we have this. In our methodology, we don't go backwards on zoning unless there's a demonstrated public health and safety standard hazard, like the floodplain. So we kept the land use designation according to the zoning in this spot, per our methodology. But we recognize that there are all these conflicts. And I mentioned conflicts with values earlier in the land use map.
Comments or questions about that?
Can you put the land use map in a larger form back up for that area, just a second?
Yes.
And show the, yeah, show the designation.
So this is the draft. So we've got a chunk of agricultural designation, which is, these are, this is a mapped 100-year floodplain, this dark green. But then this yellow, that's one unit per acre. That's rural residential, which is now rural residential and small ag, but one unit per acre roughly. And then this lighter green, which is now, was rural residential and small ag, but is now rural residential and ag. And that's generally somewhere roughly one to five, two, one to two, all the way to one to 10.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, other comments or questions? Is it cringe-worthy when you come across bad zoning, but...
Well, and I think, you know, we also saw zoning earlier that we just changed, right? I mean, we just, the, the one out on Brooks, we just, is also existing zoning and we made it a less intense land use designation. And I don't know the history of the zoning in this area, but it seems completely antithetical to me to the city's growth... to me, to the city's growth policy, to the county's growth policy, that we would want to have one acre lots in such incredible wildlife habitat, and as well as agricultural soils, a prime agricultural soils. And so I would like to make a motion that we designate more of this as agriculture. I'll just make it as agriculture, why don't I do that?
I have a question about that.
Or it could be some other designation, maybe working land.
Yeah, if we wish to pass on the recommendation to commissioners that we think this needs to be preserved as wild land, is agriculture the best zoning, quote unquote, designation that we have for that?
I'm not wedded to that, but it is agricultural soil, a lot of it, and maybe Andrew could give us some ideas on what, or working lands, perhaps?
Yeah, our least intensive land use designation that targets private lands is the working lands land use designation. That has a density of anywhere from one unit per 40 acres down to one unit to 160. The agriculture land use designation would be the second least intensive, and that's one unit, one unit per 40. There are larger tracts out here, nothing in the neighborhood of 160, nothing in the neighborhood of that big. They're all 40s and some 80s and-
So Andrew, I guess, to your point, or to the point of the board, if we wanted to discourage people acting on their one unit per acre zoning, or maybe discourage slash incentivize less dense, less density here, is there, is there something we can do with the land use designation map to encourage that?
Well, so the land use designation map is the foundation for our zoning. And one of the implementation actions in this plan is to rezone and zone. So there are some areas in the planning area that are unzoned, we would like to see those zoned. There are some places in the planning map where we would like to see rezoned, but, you know, primarily the areas where we have infrastructure, where we could develop at greater intensities, and we're not capitalizing upon our infrastructure. If we did designate this as a land use designation of lower density, we don't want to just put it on the shelf, we would like to rezone it. And so at some point in the future, this board is going to perhaps have a rezoning application that's forwarded by the county to zone this as some sort of agricultural zoning, which maybe has yet to be developed. So you, just be aware, like, do not take this lightly, this decision, because we might ask you to stand up here and have really angry people yell at you. So be prepared for that. It's not, because it's part of a planning process, and it's not necessarily, we don't, there's always a little bit of a risk of a lawsuit when you're doing something like this, but it's not necessarily a takings. We're not terribly concerned about that, but we are concerned about the political ramifications of doing that, and having to stand up in front of an angry mob. And so, just, are you ready to stand up in front of an angry mob? That's what I'm asking.
Andrew, sorry, just one other follow-up question, and I appreciate your candor, and reminding us of the weight of these decisions. Has this part of the county come together to request a land use designation, or is this just straight-up recommendation from the staff based on the information you have?
So Deshaun participated, but it was mainly focused on this property right here. He made a recommendation, he contacted us earlier in the process and asked for a land use designation right here.
Of greater density, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and that's up on the clay bench. His justification for it was, is the city sewer is actually right here, city sewer and city water are right there, adjacent to his property. And the previous land use plan, which is the Butler, help me out Christine, the Butler, not Butler Creek, it's, there's a land use plan for this area, there's a neighborhood plan, and the previous-
Why Mullin?
Why Mullin, thank you. Has this area designated for one, four units per acre, his clay bench up here.
Okay.
So we, the proposal we sent to you represented that request, but he didn't have any, he's like, you know, when we talked about this area, and his agricultural areas, like, oh yeah, you can't put houses down there. It had groundwater or something, I'm not really sure, but-
Okay.
Can you zoom out again to just show me where that yellow thing is a little bit more? I can't.
Yeah.
I lost where you went.
Yeah, I zoom around a lot, sorry. This is north of Mullin Road. If I turn off the land use designation, you're going to see it pretty clear, when I, well, when I turn off the city, it's, it's just, here's the airport.
It's been pointed out to me, thank you. I found it. Actually, I didn't, she did, but we've got it.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Just to clarify, Andrew, the land use planning, land use planning map, and there's not a takings issue unless it gets rezoned. You know, you're talking about legal ramifications, but-
One of the criteria for evaluating a zone change is its compliance with the land use map, with the compliance with the growth policy. So if you're making a decision on a zone change that's in compliance with your growth policy, it really, it takes the legal pressure off you from a regulatory taking. You're not denying the person use of the property. They still have use of the property. So when we did ask our, we discussed this with our attorney, this idea, because we knew this might come up. And it, you can't, he can't unequivocally say, though, there is no regulatory taking issue, because attorneys just won't do that conceptually. They want to see all the facts before they make a determination. But he said generally, yeah, it's not that big of a concern. I think the concern is more of a, do we have the political will to rezone it? If we want to, if we're going to change the land use designation, be ready to rezone it. That's what I'm asking you to do.
Yeah, thank you. Stephanie?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, just clarification on that. Is this area within the school boundaries of Dismet School?
I believe its target range is not Dismet.
Okay. And then my other question is, I'm curious about the floodplain that you were talking about. Was that the 500 or the 100 flood, 100-year floodplain?
It's probably a combination of both, but I can't remember for sure.
Because my, my question is, if you turn the designations back on, that's right over near Council Grove State Park, right? Sort of, that's Mallard Way coming in and then-
I think it's west of there.
West of, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's really hard to see, but it's somewhere along, yeah, Council Grove is somewhere west.
I just, wasn't that whole area flooded?
This area is west of Council Grove, isn't it?
No.
No.
No, Council Grove's further.
Further out?
Further out, yeah. Somewhere out here.
It's-
Okay.
Quite a ways out.
Okay, so we're still down. I was just, it just seemed like, especially that area where it cuts right up there near where the slough's coming through in the river, it just surprises me that this wouldn't have automatically been chosen as agriculture, just for the, it looks like it's going to flood, but I don't, I'm not a hydrologist, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we followed, in this area, this area, the 500-year floodplain is regulatory. I did double-check with my floodplain specialist, and yeah, we captured it.
Okay, cool, thanks. Other comments or questions on item, FWP M31? Yes, Michael?
Would you classify any of this large area that we're talking about as possible, whoever owns it, let's say Deshaun owns it, is this property that he was possibly thinking that, you know, one day when I get ready to retire, I want to develop this? Is this developable land? Did he mention that to you at all?
He didn't on the area, he did here, essentially, like-
Right, right. I understand that.
Yeah, but not so much down here, and I can't speak for the other large landowners, I have not talked to them.
Okay, yes, Niva?
Hi. I think this area is worth going to bat for. The Fish Wildlife and Parks refers in their discussion of Laval and Butler Creek Wildlife Movement Corridor, considers this area as some of the last viable movement corridors for wildlife species to get from the rattlesnake and the Northern Continental Divide ecosystem down to the Clark Fork River and into the Selway. If you look at their map, which again is not page numbered, but it shows this area, and I'm kind of thinking that it might provide some guidance for us to think about where we might propose some changes to the land use map, or make a recommendation to the commissioners. I understand that Andrew, you know, was going by this existing zoning, but this is really important habitat, and I think it's, that one possibility might be to use this movement corridor line essentially to identify the areas kind of west of the green in the middle? So, or, and I guess that's southwest, I don't know, getting late. And I don't know exactly where that would fit on this map, but it looks to me like from theirs, it would essentially cut, kind of where the cursor is, across to Mullin, to the river. And so at least we could protect some more in that, and Nancy, I see some of it's already subdivided.
Yeah, that's a subdivision there, that's already developed.
Maybe if we could go to some of the, that's still open, I guess I'm just trying to figure out where to propose to make some change here.
What's the title on that map you're looking at?
It's called Laval and Butler. So it kind of crosses through that, that, yeah, keep going, kind of in the middle of that existing yellow there.
I'm kind of just guessing that this is where you're headed.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's hard to know without seeing more detail, but-
We would want to capture that, that, but, this would probably be up here, this chunk, because it's out of, it's not prime agricultural soil, and it's not irrigated, this would actually probably be better as working lands, this rural residential piece right here, if you were going to change it, that would be my thought.
That section, 44, the one that's up, the one up north of there? Wait, which one?
This guy right here.
That one?
This is, this is the, those really important draws.
Yeah. Yeah, 43.
That's the stuff I'm interested in, too.
Yeah, that looks-
Something like this.
Andrew, might it be possible for you to pull up this FWP map instead?
I, well, you know what, we got, I think we might be able to pull it up just in the Word format.
Yeah. Because it does demonstrate the draws that you're talking about.
Is that it? And so this, this 43, if you wanted to go something lower, I would recommend working lands, because it's not what we would target for an agricultural land use designation, because it's not prime, it's not, it's really not going to be agriculture. It might be like rangeland or something. But the rest of it, I would, if you wanted to do something lower, I would recommend agriculture.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect, that, I don't know how to do it, the area in Grass Valley, encompassed on the map for Laval and Butler Creek Wildlife Movement Corridor, the area to the southwest of the currently proposed agricultural area, we would change that to agriculture, and the area to the north of the currently proposed agricultural area, we would change to working lands.
Identified as 43, yeah.
Yeah, 43, and then the others might be, or 277, 281, 280, part of 189, I guess, I'm not sure where the lines are, no, yeah, a little bit of it.
Okay, Niva has made a motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
Seconded by Peter. Any discussion on the motion as proposed?
Is there some obvious reason we're not understanding why this is a bad idea?
Well, Andrew just pointed out some political ramifications of this.
Ramifications. Reluctance, so you want to make it clear that the board did this and not?
Well, essentially, what we're recommending to the county commissioners is that we think that this is, assuming it passes, that this is something worth pursuing, even if it is politically unpopular, but it's really their decision if they want to take it on as a battle.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Michael?
I, well, before we do this, I just think that it would be advantageous to hear more from the folks out there that own this property, what it's like, what, I mean, we're just looking at dark green, light green, and saying, do this. I just don't, I just think that we're sort of getting ahead of ourselves.
You might suggest, Michael, that as part of this motion, that Andrew or the staff reach out to the landowners that will be affected, so they go to the county commission meeting?
Yes.
It's a friendly amendment to the motion. Okay, other comments or questions from planning board members?
Yeah, so we got a friendly amendment that is going to change, I got agricultural to working lands, a suggestion to the county commissioners who can rule on it, and that county planners will reach out to the landowners to advise them that this has been an amendment that the commissioners are going to look at.
Okay. Okay. Are we clear on what we're voting on? Okay. So all those in favor of the motion as proposed, with the friendly amendment from Michael, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that is a unanimous recommendation. Thank you, everybody. Just one second here, I need to make some notes. Yes.
May we have a brief respite?
Yeah, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 8:55. Start off on page 14. And this is related to FWP, item T1, Implement Setbacks That Protect Natural Resources and Values. There are a variety of text recommendations proposed by staff. I'm not sure how much discussion we'll have on these items, but Andrew, if you wanted to just make a quick mention on why you're proposing all of these additional changes?
Right, so Montana's Fish Wildlife and Parks comments, really, they really emphasize the importance of these three habitat types, and then, as in, that's a, that's a resource that we need to try to protect. So in addition to those three habitat types, they talked about some strategies to try to protect those habitat types, and that's through the, those concepts of connectivity and permeability. And so we think that those habitat types, because they're so important, need to be identified within the document. In the section, that's the role of the county, so the role, part of the- So the role, part of the role, our role in our community, the one community approach is to, to make sure that we're working to protect these habitat types. So that would be the recommended changes to page 11. Then there's recommended changes to the realities section where we think we need to identify our environment as a reality. And so there would be a subhiding that's on wildlife and wildlife and habitat, and that's where it sort of talks a little bit more about maybe some of the value-oriented discussion. And then the last part of that would be, that would also include that section on climate change, too, in the realities. And then the last component of the big text changes based off of these comments is on page 21, which is the strategies, those that we need to employ, where it sort of talks about incorporating buffers and setbacks as a strategy in the land use map to try to protect these habitat types and to employ these, the idea, the concepts of permability and connectivity.
Okay, thank you. So that would be page 15.
That's on page 14 of the chart and, yeah.
Yeah. The second part, as he's discussing page 21, that's on page 15 of the spreadsheet. Are there any comments or questions from the planning board about this? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. There's no other changes on that, on page 15, except for FWP item T4, which staff is recommending clarifying language. Okay, takes us to page 16. I'm going to skip over the ones that already refer back to clarifying language unless planning board members have other ideas, but I would like to bring up FWP item T11 that speaks to cluster housing development to improve fish and wildlife habitat. I think this is also related to these wildlife corridors. Andrew, did you want to add anything else to that since that's a more significant text change?
Yeah, it just, there's some formatting constraints within the document. We're really, we're trying to have these things stay on one page because they are more usable to the public if they're like that. And so I can't tell you what the exact language is going to be until I plug it in and format it. Some of these are real close to going over one page, and so I might have to reword.
Okay.
We'll see. We'll get stuff, we'll catch the intent in there, I promise.
Other questions from planning board on any items listed on page 16 of the Excel spreadsheet?
Well, I guess I just want to add that I really like that addition in T11, you know, adding wildlife, fish and wildlife and movement corridors and so on. I think that's a really nice addition and we can then, when we go to subdivide, we can consider that. And so I, and I like that. Thanks.
Okay, great. Page 17. Looks like staff is recommending some changes dependent on space and formatting. Did you want to add anything, Andrew?
No, that, yeah, it's exactly right.
Okay, great. Any comments or questions from planning board related to any items listed on page 17 of the Excel spreadsheet?
Me again. I would strike prime from T13 regarding agricultural soils, and I'm going to make a suggested change to the land use designation description related to that. So I think it's just fine to drop that word from there if folks are okay with it.
Andrew, do you have comments or questions about that?
No.
About the language?
It has a very specific meaning, which I can talk about later with another proposal I have.
So Andrew, for kind of just language things like this, do we need to do a motion?
I think on that one, there, so if it's just, if it's just like you caught an editing thing, I think this is contextual. I think this has a meaning, so I would want you to...
Okay, so Niva, would you like to propose a motion?
Yes, I'd like to. Propose a motion that the textual change proposed under FWP T13 be revised to strike the word prime. I'm happy to speak to this if anyone wants an explanation.
Please.
Okay, so...
Wait, wait, Niva, before we go into the discussion, can I get a second?
Oh, we need a second.
Okay, seconded by Stephanie. Please go ahead.
Thanks. So agricultural soils are generally categorized into three classifications. Prime soils of statewide importance and soils of local importance. Prime soils are really, could also be called soils of national importance because they are soils that match specific criteria set by the federal government for high-quality soils we want to protect across the nation, many of which we're converting in this plan. But soils of statewide importance are very closely related to prime. In other words, there's very few criteria characteristics that are different between prime and statewide. And those are established by the state level, of course. And then the local level soils, the local soils have been established here in Missoula County, meaning they've been mapped by the conservation district. And the reason they were mapped was for the purposes of the open space program in order to enable the landowners to access federal funds as part, as a, as an amenity on that land, right? Let's see, I don't want to say. So in other words, we mapped the local soils based on input from citizens, the conservation district mapped them. And so they did that in order to expand what land is available for federal monies for conservation. Those lands are also eligible for our bond monies that we pass. So it seems to me that they are important. They are not as high quality as the state and the prime. But as written, the land use designation for agriculture refers in multiple places only to prime. And I think it's really important that we change that to include, and make it consistent with our subdivision regulation of, definition of agriculture, which includes all the soils. So I'm going to be, maybe I can make that motion, well, that's my motion now is to just strike prime, but that's the reason, and I'm going to propose that we add statewide and local into the land use designation of agriculture later on when I'm allowed.
Yes, Peter?
With the reader, how do we make that distinction for the reader of this document, both legal and public, layperson? That we're referring to something that has a, that we're defining. So they, someone reads, like we were talking about before, a piece of, piece of text that we have, says buildings are cited to preserve agricultural soil. And if we use the term prime or state, I can't remember the other designation.
Local.
We use local, that that has a legal definition. How do we protect, and protect what you want to do?
It has, I don't know if it has, well, I guess it has a legal definition, but it's, it's really, these are characteristics of soils. Like, so we might say wildlife habitat, you know, and nobody says, "Well, you know, which animals go there?"
Do we use the term flyover or we use access? Those have biological meanings as well. So we put a lot of thought into the language that we'd like to have included here. How does the reader know that we have put that kind of thought into this?
Yes, Stephanie.
I think that, just like when you mentioned flyover, I'm assuming you're a bird person?
Yeah.
Okay, you know what that means, non-birder might not know that.
Might not.
Somebody who deals with agricultural soils knows what soil of statewide importance, soil of local importance, prime soil. And so my understanding is that this is making it essentially, this change, which I think is, makes a lot of sense, would be defined somewhere. Because I'm understanding that Niva wants to put it into the land use designation, so somewhere it's going to say agricultural soils is defined as. Is that correct? Would you say that? Like, we could do that?
I think what Niva was envisioning is that in the goals of the agricultural land use designation, it would say prime, statewide and local, soils of prime, statewide and local importance. And, I mean, it's like, we don't have to define every word. You know, we don't have definitions in here. They're defined in the natural resource, natural, they're defined by, they're defined out. There's definitions out there.
And I guess I would just say that it makes sense to pull the, to strike the word prime because that does give it a specific definition in the world. So I totally think it makes sense to strike that word from this particular thing.
I agree with you guys. The general, the more general, actually in this, at this level of planning, the better.
So in this case, are you saying that it'd be better to just strike prime in both? We could strike it just in the goals and in the character and just say agricultural soils because when we go to zone or do subdivision regs, we've actually got a definition of ag.
That's an option. Yeah.
Okay, other comments or questions on the motion that Niva has proposed?
I'm going to amend my, can I amend my motion? No. I mean, I want to strike it in both places on that page, on page 32. I think that would be easiest.
I'm sorry, Niva, page 30 of the document, the element?
Page 32 of the element.
The element.
The land use designation on agriculture, which is the same text that we were looking at in this chart on page, on the spreadsheet. So I would propose that we strike prime from character and from the goals, and I can live with that as long, if it's more general, we'll just, at this point, it's okay, I think.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Yes, Michael?
Okay, so...
So it'd be...
Can we legally defend prime? And then can we legally defend statewide and local soils? In other words, if somebody, you know, it's like you said, prime is a federal thing, federal law, is that what it is?
Designation.
Designation? Okay, so if it's a federal designation, does that mean that it has the federal government basically standing behind it, prime? But who stands behind statewide or local? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes. So at the state level, it's the state office of the Natural Resources Conservation Service. And then at the local level, it's the local conservation district. So they've actually mapped all these soils, it's not, you know...
Yeah, I know they've done.
So that, and they categorize them.
I'm just wondering, I understand.
Okay.
I guess maybe I missed the question.
Well, I was just thinking that by the designation prime, the federal government has said this is prime. Okay, so the federal government, if you say, or you want to challenge that, then you take that challenge to the federal government. If you take statewide and you want to change, challenge that, you would take it to the state. And local, you take it to local. In other words, there's, is that not true?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know what it is.
The challenge would be, I mean, because the way these maps are, like, so it's so general that when you actually got down in there looking at it more specifically, it's not as uniform as the map makes it look. So I think when you get down into the specifics of particular parcels, it's going to seem different in that sense. And I don't know, the soil scientist would, that looks at a particular parcel would say whether this is X or Y, and I don't know that there's like a challenge to be had there, if you will, like it's a physical property.
So if somebody wants to, so if somebody wants to develop a particular piece of property, do they have to have the soils evaluated?
In recent years, they have done that. They aren't actually required, but they're doing it by, because people want to see that.
Thank you.
Okay, other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion as proposed, which my understanding is to strike the word prime from page 17, FWP T13, and page 32 of the element, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Michael is opposed. Okay. Moving on. Let's see, staff are recommending a variety of smaller, a variety of smaller edits and changes based on the comments from FWP that are listed on page 17. Are there any other general comments or questions about those changes? Okay, so Andrew, that brings us to the end of the comments listed on the spreadsheet that you've had a chance to react to.
The end of the comments, yes.
The end of some comments.
We have more comments, though.
We do have more comments. Okay, great. So what I'd like to move on to now are other comments listed in this document that you guys have. And this document also includes comments from planning board members, myself included, so we can dig into those as well. So Andrew, do you want to just kick us off with kind of the highlights of anything that we, that needs further discussion?
So some of this has been discussed, but some of it hasn't. And do you all have the little tabs on there? Hopefully, some of you do, at least, maybe? I've got them. So there's one comment on, that's related to the Buck House Bridge. We've, the, the property out by Blue Mountain on Highway 93, the commercial property that we discussed quite a bit. So we, it supports the commercial land use designation. There's a, so we've already debated that. There's a comment from, that's labeled as the smet, which is asking for something that we have not discussed, which would turn a little bit of industrial into neighborhood center, such as the lower density mixed use, and I can elaborate on that if you need to. There's a comment from WGM that Jeff clarified earlier, that we received at the last hearing in writing, to change some land use designation out west of Deshaue Lane, but north of the area we discussed earlier, so up on the Clay Bench. Then there's some comments on Waldo Road, and then there's the comments from the planning board members. So I do think we need to discuss the smet school comments and the Riverside comments, and then the planning board member comments, because we have not, the other ones, we've already evaluated in some sense.
Have planning board members had a chance to look at the comment from the smet public school? Otherwise, it might be worth just reading the comment.
I can, I can quickly show you what they want.
Yeah, if you would, Andrew, that would be great.
So smet schools would like to see, and they've gotten letters from the landowners supporting this. This land use, this industrial land use designation here turned to community mixed So the landowners seem okay with it, the school, the reason why the school wants it is because this residential area will be going to smet school, and they would rather have the children walking through an area of community mixed use than industrial on the way...
Where's the school?
I'm not, I'm sorry, not community mixed use, neighborhood center. Neighborhood center, so, yeah, they want this neighborhood center. The school is right here. So children would theoretically have to cross Highway 10 right here, and so we would have to work on getting a safe crossing and then travel on the south side of Highway 10 through residential and then a mixed... ten through residential and then a mixed use area to this potential future neighborhood.
Is that, is that a zoned neighborhood already?
It is zoned industrial.
It's zoned industrial?
Yeah, but the landowners have submitted letters saying they're okay with it. Well, apparently, these are sort of, they're businesses. It's literally largely undeveloped, but there are businesses on site, which probably I would, I would fear is that they're permitted under industrial zoning, because this is zoned industrial.
Okay. Comments or questions for Andrew from Planning Board? Yes, Michael?
Thank you. I think that just because of the location, I mean, it's an industrial area. The, the airport's out there, I mean, that's what it is. I, I don't see why we would want to build houses out there. Doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. So Andrew, as you and staff are, I'm sure, aware, you know, we've had the principal come out and share his vision for the future of the school and that neighborhood, and there were kind of conflicting views on Planning Board on what that future should be. I guess I'm curious to know if there's been other work done by the commissioners, by the staff, to figure out what this neighborhood wants to be and what is reasonable?
We were, this is the process.
Okay, this is it? Okay. All right. Other comments or questions from Planning Board?
I have to echo Michael's comment that, you know, we have repeatedly seen proposals and, and heard testimony on, you know, kind of the, the companies that are based out there. You know, there's like a big FedEx center, and it's near the airport, and they, you know, there's all of these kind of bigger plans for expanding the airport and, and that kind of enterprise scale development, which to me makes sense because it's along on ninety in the airport. And there's this kind of enclave of, of a small community with a neighborhood school, which is fine, but, you know, I, I think that they're, I'm not sure that they fit into the future of the vision for the growth policy, both for the city and the county. And it sounds like they haven't really come to terms with what that is for them. That's kind of where we're at.
Yes.
I hear where everyone's coming from on that. I think that DeSmet School is a special place, it's a special community, and I've seen the work that they do with kids. It's something that you can get there that you can't get in other places in Missoula. And I think that that's something to be said for it. It's, it's a really, the, the, that community loves that school, and that's not something that kids find every day in their learning environment. So I would be in support of something that would help them get their kids to school safely and that would help them try to grow their, their area and their community out there without us just saying, you're not important anymore, we're, we're going to put industrial here. So, yeah, I, I personally think that if a community cares so much about their kids that they have that much, like, they've been so involved in this process, and it's, it's just, they do cool things with kids. So from my perspective, it's worthwhile for us to try to keep it.
And I guess to just add to that, one of the things that, you know, seems to me, we have residential right there, right? So we're proposing essentially extending the residential. I, I'm not sure how much, you know, if you just leave it as industrial, you could say, well, it's inappropriate to have industrial right about the residential, although I guess it does on the north side of it. Oh, yeah, could you show that? Go back to that.
This is just the aerial photo. Yep.
So that's what's there now.
What are the distances that we're talking about between the school and that area?
Great question. So from this intersection.
Wow.
Seven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven point zero-nine feet.
That's a mile and a half.
Mile and a half. We could do it in yards. Two thousand yards, ninety-two thousand inches.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, I'm not sure that I see that the schools, I mean, the schools rationale for this kind of zoning is defended by kids walking a mile and a half to school through mixed neighborhoods.
There's no.
Barefoot.
I just don't see it as a reas, as a strong enough rationale to change the zoning for one reason or the other. I, I, I don't know where to stand on this.
Okay, other comments?
Can I ask a question? Is there, so I am sympathetic to the school because it's there, and, you know, there's some residential out there, it's not all industrial, or is there anywhere else that may be closer to the school that we could provide more residential?
So we, we.
If that makes sense?
I am, we were also sympathetic to DeSmet School, and we did really bang our heads on how to get more residential out there. So let me turn the land use designation back on. So their school district ends roughly right about here. So we, we are suggesting neighborhood residential here, which, you know, could allow for some okay density, probably not hundreds of units on that hillside, but, you know, some. This is, this is a commercial center, which does allow for residential uses, but because it's on the interchange, it, you know, commercial would probably be a better spot. This is mainly an existing neighborhood, although it could infill more. This is going to build out, and this is currently what it is, so that's not a change on the land use map from the existing zoning. The big change is this planned neighborhood. And I've, I've told this to the principal, the, out at DeSmet, Matt Dryson. Right now, our biggest challenge for getting residential in the DeSmet School District isn't necessarily the land use designations or zoning, it's the lack of infrastructure. We have the infrastructure out here to support industrial level development because they don't necessarily need city water. We have sewer running through that area. But we really need city, or that, you know, public water and public sewer, that combination for residential development. You can't really do residential development at density without public water and public sewer. So we identified this area right here as a planned neighborhood, trying to hold it for future growth, like I talked about earlier. And if either the landowner, the developer finds a way to get infrastructure out there, or the county finds a way to get infrastructure out there, then it could be developed at, at an urban scale is what we would like to see. So that land use designation, if developed, would, they would be building a new school.
Andrew, quick question for you. The Y community is slotted for greater density based on the current map, and so I guess I'm wondering if, if that's, that would be their school?
They, they, they basically get this chunk of the Y right, oh, I'm sorry. This chunk of the Y area is in DeSmet, the rest is in Frenchtown.
Okay. Yes, Stephanie?
I just have one other thought, too. Just from the, so we've been talking, and I know that there's restrictions within the, the water and the sewers and the utilities, but I guess just even without the school there, wouldn't it be nice to have some kind of a neighborhood center or something in between all of that industrial? I think just from a planning point, too, we've been talking about how we're moving away from just that heavy industrial, like, commercial sort of thing to more mixed use, and that's where people want to be, and I, I don't know. I just think even without the fact that kids might not walk a mile and a half to school, it's, if the landowner who owns that piece of land is on board, I don't understand why it would be bad to have that as, maybe it does have something to do with infrastructure. So that's my question, is what is the infrastructure impact of that change from it being industrial to?
Well, I think it could develop more readily currently with just sewer as industrial. If it was a mixed use zone, maybe some commercial uses would work fine without a public water system, but if, definitely if we wanted to get density of any, residential density of any level, we would need some sort of public water system. But this is, if you read the, you know, the infrastructure part of this, the implementation strategy, this isn't a target area for the county to try to find a way to get water out there. So it, why it might not develop today, you know, at a, at a residential density, it might be appropriate, or it might be able to later on when we, when, if we do find a way to get water out there. I'm like you guys, I, this is a tough one. It's hard.
Jamie, did you have a comment?
Being on the Housing Authority Board, we had some contact and a good deal of discussion with the school because the school was interested in seeing more residential development to ensure its survival, is how I understood it. That in the future, if they don't continue to see the population, their, their pupil population grow, they may not exist. And I don't know the mechanics of that exactly, but I was sympathetic to the desire for more residential, and so I'm going to lean in that direction with regard to this choice, this vote.
I, I guess I'll share my opinion on this. I'm looking at this from a, a much more macro perspective. So while I'm sympathetic to the school and, and their needs for, you know, wanting a greater tax base built around residential in that community, I'm looking at the fact that we're getting a brand-new airport and all of these new airlines, and we're trying to attract big employers to the county, and, you know, we've identified the area around the airport to be this kind of conference center destination, and, you know, I, I just think that we have to, you know, we have these planned neighborhoods for residential. We need to think about, you know, how we're going to transition our agriculture to, or, I'm sorry, our industrial land to either continue to be industrial land and be able to support things like tech companies or whatever, or, you know, heavy commercial use, and all of that is going to be built around I-90 and the airport. And so I, for me, that takes priority.
And I, I'll, I'm not advocating one side or the other, I'm really not on this, but throw out something out on, along those lines. Peter, you asked earlier, are we keeping track of, as things come and go? The, the land use designation that's probably taken the hardest hit in this is industrial. And so I guess weigh that into that, too, that we've probably lost especially, nothing, most of it wasn't usable out here because of the contamination out at the Smurfit Stone Site, but we lost a ton of industrial land out there if we go with the recommendations. And so we, it is, we identified in the planning area profile that the county is still going to be taking a pretty heavy load of industrial lands in the future. We, we need to maximize our industrial areas we have. This is a, I'm not advocating either way, but that's a, that's something to think about as well.
Yes, Peter?
I worked with the Stevensville Community Foundation to help do a public-private fundraising effort to build a new school in Stevensville. And the big problem they had down there was even though they had a huge development plan for the Lone Rock area, they were talking about a very small tax base, property tax base. So a two mil, two million dollar addition to their school was going to cost residents there roughly a thousand dollars in increase a year in property tax. So it was unrealistic and would never pass. And so it was a search for private funding to build a new school. And I'm worried that DeSmet is going to, you know, if they have an embarrassment of riches and have a new development of a hundred homes, they're going to be in big trouble. I, I don't think we can make zoning policy based on what DeSmet School needs. I just am not comfortable doing that.
Stephanie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I feel like we've been doing, and this isn't zoning policy, this is our land use map and our guidance document, and we've been doing that around what people in neighborhoods and what people in communities have been asking us to do all night long. Like, we made changes to, every, every single change we've been making has been based on what the community has asked for. This community is not asking for rural zoning, this community's not asking for commercial, this community's asking for residential so their kids can have other kids to go to school with.
Well, no, they're asking for mixed use.
Mixed use, yeah, exactly, you're right. And I guess, I, I just, no, I just think if I was working in an industrial area right there, I would want there to also be something else other than just plants. I don't think that this, I don't think that designating this as our intent that there might be a mixed use in one area of the residential, or of the industrial, would make industrial not happen. I don't think having a mixed use near a conference center would make, I think that would be an attractive thing. I don't think anybody wants to come to a conference and then be near a bunch of industrial plants. I, I don't see how making this a mixed use area would, would deter from the need for industrial out there. I understand that, I understand the expansion. I'm not picturing, let's keep this rural community out as, I just think that, like, we've been listening to neighborhoods all night long, and now we're not listening to this neighborhood for what they're asking and for what they've gotten landowners on board for, and I, I don't understand why we're not listening to them when we listen to everybody else. That's, I just, yeah.
Other comments? Okay, well, I guess if somebody would like to make a motion based on the proposal that, or the recommendation that DeSmet wants, they can do so. Because I don't, there's not a motion on the floor at this point. To approve the change that DeSmet has requested from industrial to neighborhood mixed use.
I'll make a motion even if it might fail. I motion that we approve the change that DeSmet has requested to make that particular parcel, switch it from industrial to mixed use commercial.
Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Jamie. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, well, if we're ready for a vote, I think we may need to use our hands here for this vote. So all those in favors, please raise your hand. So that's Jamie, Stephanie, and Dudley, and Niva, and those opposed, Peter, myself, and Michael. The motion, was it?
Carries.
Thank you. Let's see. Andrew, you mentioned that we needed to discuss the item submitted by WGM Group about Riverside?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm trying to kind of draw it here in the map real quickly. So they're asking for some changes to the planned neighborhood designation east of Waldo, or west of Deshaue Lane, south of Highway ten, just outside the Y. And they would like to see some planned neighborhood, or, so instead of planned neighborhood, some neighborhood residential, some industrial, and then some working lands.
Andrew, can you orient us on the map a little bit, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff is clarifying his clarification. So this would be no change, the, the orange would be no change, it would stay as planned neighborhood. Yeah, okay. And then the working lands would stay as working lands. Okay. And then industrial.
Can you, can, sorry, can you show us a little bit? I'm having a hard time figuring out where this is in town.
Yep.
It's right near where we just were.
Yep. So we're going to, it's, here's the Y.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, just, just west of the Y.
Okay. Comments or questions from the Planning Board?
So.
Yes, Michael?
Is that bound by Deshaue and Moccasin?
Uh, yeah, Moccasin on the south, yeah.
And that's the Shaw coming down between the gray and the brown and the?
Correct.
Is that the Shaw there?
Yeah, that's the Shaw on the east side. Yep, right here.
Yes?
Yes. So could, could you explain this proposal a little bit? Because it seems sort of like a hodgepodge, because on one hand you want residential and then another part of it to process aggregate? And is that, so that means this would be like a gravel pit?
Yes, please come on up, and please identify, give your name for the record, please.
Thank you, Jeff Smith with WGM Group here. So just a quick overview of the, of the request in this.
Thank you.
So this is 160-acre parcel, like Andrew mentioned, just on the west side of De Shaw Lane. There's a high-pressure gas line that cuts through that site. It, it looks like a hodgepodge and...
Yeah, and that's a technical term I came up with.
Yeah, I agree. This, this bound here is defined by, by a high-pressure gas line that runs through the site. So on the east side of De Shaw Lane, we've got construction companies wrecking yards, we've got that precast concrete company, and a fairly heavy industrial uses. Our thinking along the, along this line is, do we want the eight-unit-per-acre housing right across the street from that industrial, or is this better used for industrial purposes to further the goals of the Y, but also to take advantage of that, of that developed transportation corridor there? Through this, it also gives us the opportunity to construct and design a buffer for this residential area. This is an established gravel stockpile and gravel, gravel storage, and it's, it's not a gravel pit, it's a, it's a gravel processing area. So there's a shortage of aggregate in the Y area. There's, there's a use here that exists now. So our request is that that area that's bound by the gas line to the south, and then their property boundary to the north, be designated as working lands. That's a placeholder for future residential. Doesn't chop it up into that smaller, into smaller five-acre pieces, like Andrew mentioned earlier, they were trying to preserve those for potential, future dense residential. So that, that allows an important, important resource for the Y area to reach its full potential, is the crossroads of the, of I-90. And Highway 93, the industrial just makes sense to provide like-for-like on either side of De Shaw Lane. It also provides some more industrial lands in a very valuable area. And then the planned neighborhood, the intent here would be to create a buffered planned neighborhood area from De Shaw Lane, and those industrial uses on the west, bound by that gas line, and then also just bound by a logical location to end the industrial use on that.
What's the zoning to the south?
I believe that's unzoned.
Unzoned, correct.
Unzoned, okay.
The property is unzoned, the land directly to the south is CA3.
Which is?
Residential.
CA3 is a residential, lower-density residential.
And Jeff, excuse me, did you, you may have misspoken, because you said that northwest corner would be working lands, but your proposal in here says open resource.
So the, yes, that was, that is, that is incorrect.
Oh, this paper is incorrect, okay.
I submitted a modification.
I'm sorry, I missed.
I'm not sure if it made it all the way back.
It probably did, and I blew it.
After conferring with Andrew, we changed that from open and resource to working lands, as that fits better for private lands and the use it's intended, and has that placeholder.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Jeff or Andrew? Yes, Michael?
Is there sewer out there?
There is not sewer there now. Right now, well, there's sewer here, so that's a little bit of a misstatement. There's sewer right to this corner.
Right to that corner?
The Y Sewer Project brought, brought sewer down, it comes down, Alita Drive, which you can't quite see here, and out, Long Acres Drive, cuts through Frasier's Development, and serves, this is Moccasin Lane, it's pretty tough to see under there, but that sewer ends right here at Moccasin Lane.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Is there water available, municipal?
The closest public water system would be the, the Y-area water system here on the, on the north and east side of the I-90, Highway 93 intersection. The closest city water, I believe, ends right here at Butler Creek.
I guess I'm curious to know if staff have any conflicts or are generally comfortable with this proposal.
We don't have hard feelings either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would entertain a motion to approve the request from WGM Group.
I'd so move.
Excuse me?
I would so move.
Thank you, can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion?
Just, just to clarify, what is this land proposed in the, in the, in this version?
It's planned neighborhood.
The whole thing was planned neighborhood?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're gaining some industrial, right?
We would.
Okay.
Yep.
There we go. I'll support it then.
Okay, um, let's see, I wonder if I have any other questions?
Getting late, Niva's voting for industrial.
Andrew, is this, is this a part of the kind of Y community planning area?
It, I don't, I don't believe it's within the boundaries of any neighborhood plans.
Okay.
I don't believe, you know, actually, Laval might know, nope.
It's not, okay, okay. I'm sorry?
This is De Shaw.
Oh, De Shaw, okay. Okay, well, I think we're ready for a vote, then. All those in favor to approve the proposal presented by WGM Group, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes, thank you. Okay, the next item that I think we need to discuss, do we need to discuss the Waldo thing? No?
No, it's up, now it's your guys' thoughts.
Right.
We've made it through all the public comments, congratulations.
So, yeah, so now we can dive into comments from the Planning Board. I submitted mine in writing, Niva submitted some, but of course, we have the rest of this time to discuss our thoughts. So who'd like to go first? I guess I'll go first. My comments to the board were, let's see, I guess my biggest concern with the land use map, as I was looking at it from just kind of a broad, you know, kind of snapshot of the county, was that we have desired density designations, and for kind of narrow canyon areas. And I give Grant Creek as an example, you know, I think Upper Rattlesnake's another example, Butler Creek is another example, where we're looking to have, you know, kind of rural residential, or even more dense residential activity, and I'm just really, really worried about fire. These are kind of canyons with single entrances and exits, it's difficult for fire, the fire departments to get up in there and, you know, to provide the necessary services to these communities. And so, I guess my concern is, you know, just because that's where we've approved development, I don't necessarily think that's the best way, that's, those are the best places to continue development in light of more severe fire. And I realize that that may not be very popular, because these are very highly desirable places to live right now, but if it all burns down, then it will be a disaster. So I guess that's, that's kind of where I'm pushing back on, you know, kind of greater density for residential in, you know, these narrow canyons. Yes, Peter?
I agree completely. And I highlighted the stuff that you wrote about fire to bring up, because I think it's really important. And I think, I mentioned this before at one of our other meetings, that, you know, the commissioners are going to look at this map that we have, and, and use it to create policy, zoning policy, growth policy, a whole bunch of different things. And if we build, like you said, if we build houses in these little valleys, I mean, what's the proper term for that? I don't remember. But, and it all burns down, they'll have, it certainly is not the best, the best use of their time, I guess, I don't know how else to put it. And it kind of underscores my concern with how this, Andrew's going to kill me for this, but how this is going to be used. You know, we've talked about the 40,000-foot, or the 60,000-foot area, and it's, to me, at some level, and I'm trying to decide how important this is, it is a dangerous piece of art. It suggests that we can do stuff, it sets precedent for zoning, and if it's not used properly, we're going to burn a third of the city down when the next bad fire comes. I know, sorry, that's hyperbolic, but I, I'm kind of thinking out loud. I'll stop.
May I ask a question regarding this? So for those valleys, have, in this map, does it increase any rural residential density compared to what's there already?
Especially in these locations, for the reasons that Helen pointed out, we, the land use designations are a reflection of the existing development patterns and current zoning. So we're not calling for increased density or development in these canyons.
Yeah, I mean, I think as I'm looking at, what is it, page nine of the, of the element, it's talking about protecting public health and safety, and it has the map of the county with a bunch of really hot spots in red, and these red spots end up being where we're seeing more and more development. So I'm like, okay, well, you know, this is useless if we're not being more proactive about it. And so, I guess my question to you, Andrew, would be, you know, how far up these canyons could we say, okay, I know you want to build, and again, none of this is affordable housing, right? This is all like very expensive homes. You know, how far up these canyons can we go before, you know, we can stop and say, this needs to be, you know, open space, or, I don't know, it's not really working land, but something else?
I think for the, with the exception of maybe Butler Creek, Grant Creek and the Rattlesnake have definitely already hit their far-as-they-can-go level.
Yeah, because they hit the National Forest.
Yeah.
Right. But we're also, I mean, theoretically, we could see more density where there already is development, right?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, theoretically, but I, the county, I don't think the county commissioners would ever downzone these areas, because they're mostly developed. You would get very little benefit from going through a political battle to downzone these areas. Because you might get, you might reduce it by 50, 60 units over 20, 30 years.
So, did you mention that Butler Creek maybe hasn't reached its cap?
I, I'm just not as familiar, I can't recall if Upper Butler Creek is zoned or not, honestly. So, can you recall, Christine?
Well, I think on the land use map, you're, you have it as rural residential, is that right?
Yeah, the rural residential and agriculture, and then working lands. So that, as you can see, if I turn off the land use designation, it's, this is primary agricultural land, and then you start to get into some, these are five and 10-acre lots through here, and then as you get further up, you start to get into 20s and 40s. And so the land use map overall reflects that. So this is land use designations that would basically, basically captures the existing development pattern, and then up until where it gets into the higher densities. Now, you see, you can see there's still a lot of, there's a lot of undeveloped country here within Butler Creek.
Right.
Whereas Grant Creek and the Rattlesnake are pretty well-built out.
So is there an opportunity in Butler Creek to discourage more development in the upper areas, or even greater density?
Um...
I mean, because it, it hasn't all been built out, right? I mean, there, there's some roads, but there's not necessarily houses.
I think there's a house at the end of the road, a couple houses at the end of the road. I've been, I've got a friend up there, yeah, Butler, yeah.
I just don't know.
I think it's pretty much all the way to the end.
Yep. It's largely unzoned.
Right. Okay, well, I've expressed my concern, I guess these people can afford to rebuild their houses. I don't know what to say. My other, my other comment, and then I'll, I'll move on, is a lot of the land that we've, that's covered in this map, and specifically land that we've just discussed regarding Desmet, and also the area around the airport, is going to be annexed to the city, or eventually will be, and so I was really hoping to see detailed comments from City Planning and Development Services. And so, I don't know if that was just kind of a conversation you guys had, and that's kind of been incorporated, or...
City staff has been involved in this project from day one, and have been fantastic partners, and just really, really helped out. So we didn't seek them, because they've...
They've been there.
We've had them so involved with this, so...
Okay, well, I wanted to give Laval the opportunity to state something for the record, if, if you want to, Laval? Or not, that's fine, too. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Laval means with the Planning Office for the City of Missoula, yeah, we've been participating in the discussions, and it's been a very thorough, methodical process, I think, from research, best practices, to studying projections, and, and talking about the realistic issues of city jurisdiction, potential for change, infrastructure issues, and, and county growth and county jurisdiction. The recommendations, especially as you mentioned around the airport, are places where, you know, we're looking forward to working together with the county, and, and continuing on this iteration, as I know that Andrew had talked about that last time, about what, what we learned from this is something that can then inform growth policy work that we will be doing. So I think there's always some transition that happens, and the, the places, you know, especially where it suggests there should be master planning going on, where planned neighborhood, I don't know what you call it, we're, we're really supportive of it. And so I think they're on track, and they're filling the needs of what they heard through the process, and what they heard from us.
Great, thank you. Other comments or questions from Planning Board members? Yes, Jamie?
I'm probably late making this comment with regard to the MBIA's, or hope that density, residential density could be increased in target range in Orchard Homes. I agree with that sentiment. I think it's politically impossible, but it's very unfortunate, because they're an integral part of the city, and yet don't want to be.
Thank you, Jamie. Other comments? Or amendments that people want to make?
I, I wanted to maybe talk about this memo I handed out, if this is the time?
Yeah, sure.
Nope, that's the wrong memo I'm holding. I gave, I gave it to Niva.
You gave me your copy?
Yeah.
Are you sure you gave us these?
I certainly hope, I remember handing something out.
Did you email?
Yeah, it's titled "Missoula Area Mapping Update."
He handed them out.
Yeah, he just...
Did I take your copy?
It's okay, we can...
I have just so much paper, I'm kind of lost.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's my bad.
Project. In this memo, we have, we have the housing numbers that I discussed at the last one to start. And then the next discussion is the potential impact of soils, which you haven't seen yet, so I'm going to walk you quick, quickly through. We did a quick analysis of the potential impact of soils. We focused on prime agricultural soil and farm, soils of statewide importance, farmland of statewide importance, those two NRCS designations. We, overall, there are about 13, almost 13,000 acres of those types of soil designations within the planning area. We overlaid them with the, the land use designations, but what we wanted to do is account for the fact that some of them are already developed. And so we did a quick little analysis based off of tax parcels, tax data that the state maintains, to identify what potentially could already be developed. We wanted to err on the side of not developed. We, we identified maybe about 3,000 acres that have already been developed, so that leaves us with about close, close 9,000 to 10,000 of these soil, soils potentially available to agriculture, is the way we're phrasing it. So in the land use map, our strategy for agriculture had three components. The first was to protect. Identify these areas that were the large intact agricultural systems, large properties, we've got lots of good soil, and we've got the irrigation facilities, and let's try to protect these areas. It's easier to protect them when there aren't houses around than once the houses get in, as Mr. Benson is dealing with. as Mr. Benson is dealing with. And so that's really the agricultural land use designation, but the working lands and the open resource and recreation land use designation have some utility to that respect, too, because they're both large lot, limited density, or limited development type land use designations. So those were the three land use designations that might serve to protect the soils. The next level is to mitigate impacts to the soils. So, and large portions, areas like target range, areas like big flat, areas like the Y, where we have some of these agricultural soils intact, in place, we've also kind of chopped things up quite a bit. And so taking an avenue to try to do large-scale protection there probably wouldn't be the best strategy, so it's mitigate. And so in these land use designations, which would be the rural resident, I'm going to use the old names for ease here, rural residential, small agriculture, rural residential and residential land use designations, we're looking at elements of the land use designation to try to mitigate impacts, and that's focusing heavily on clustering, to try to cluster our development, and then in development bonus incentives, density bonuses, which incentivize people to use clustering and set aside things in perpetuity in protection. And the last strategy is to incorporate. So there are some areas where we do expect urban-level development to occur, and in these areas, we expect to mostly lose those soils, but we want that agricultural heritage and elements of urban agriculture incorporated into that neighborhood in the future. So that's really the community mixed use, where that land use designation that we're focusing on having some additional master planning occur, that's where that master planning might come into play, to try to incorporate the urban agriculture into the fabric of the community. So if you put the land use designations on the soils, what we found is that 95.8 of these prime and statewide important soils are within one of these three categories, either protect, mitigate, or incorporate. 46.8, so almost 40%, 47%, which is about 4,600 acres, is in protect. So about 47% protect. 44%, 44, 45% is in mitigate, roughly 4% is in incorporate. So, yeah, that's what we found. The existing land use patterns had a huge impact on, on this. Those areas where we focused on mitigate, on mitigate, those land use designations, 65% of the lots are already 10 acres or less in those areas. That's, that's the gist.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Any comments or questions for Andrew from the Planning Board?
I have a comment.
Yes.
And I think I will throw it in now at the end of this discussion of the land use planning. And it goes back to that rousing discussion of covenants we had last meeting. And anyway, I found it interesting, and then I, you know, I walked out of here going, covenants. And is the, is the city-county beholding to those covenants when they're not part of discussion, or maybe they are part of discussion? But I had a chance to look at some covenants in Granite County and Phillipsburg, and I saw some covenants that were community-minded, not necessarily just about protecting the development. I found it refreshing. So some, so for instance, service development outside, just outside the city of Phillipsburg, and one of the covenants was, when Phillipsburg does incorporate it and are able to build a sewer, that the landowners cannot protest that, and they will have to get rid of their set, they can go on a sewer. So these were community-minded covenants, not necessarily about protecting the small kingdom. And this brought, and I only wanted to mention this because of what Jamie just said about, you know, some developments here, they're part of the city, but they don't want to be part of the city. But we got to face it, more people are moving here. So I don't know if the city or county, when a development happens, are in on the covenants. I assume that Phillipsburg or Granite County was in on that at some point, maybe it was a stipulation of okaying the development, I don't know. But I just wanted to go on record saying, that'd be a great idea, if you could get in on those discussions, when a development does happen, and you could look to the future with population growth, and, and maybe there could be some community-minded covenants instead of just development-minded covenants, and that was my comment. Thank you.
It's really interesting. Andrew, did you have a comment? Did you have a comment for the comment?
One more thing I want you to consider, and then I promise I'm done.
Okay.
Is, in this memo, there's a title of hazards and resiliency. This is the language that I mentioned earlier that Diana came up with to incorporate into the section of the document on hazards about how climate change might affect fires and flooding. So I would appreciate, you don't have to, you're the board, you get to decide, but I would appreciate you guys consider maybe including this in your recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Niva, did you have some comments?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you so much for doing this calculation. I really appreciate it. It helps me get my mind around it, and I really appreciate the concept of incorporating community agriculture, and I just kind of want to get this on the record, into that master-planned area, that, you know, area off, the purple spot off of Broadway there is all pretty much prime soil, and it's also a historically important agricultural area in terms of our heritage, so I'm hopeful that the master plan will recognize that for, in that community, and incorporate community agriculture, maybe some kind of historic educational opportunity. So thank you for that. Those 428 acres won't all be incorp, I mean, they'll just be a little bit, I'm sure. We are still going to see conversion of quite a few acres here, but I, I really want to commend the staff for an excellent job throughout this entire process, and, and appreciate that. And I'm happy to move this proposal, or just incorporate, does anybody have any problems with it, or should we just incorporate it in the, is Diane's a proposal?
Yeah, I guess that's my question to you, Andrew. Do you want us to have this as a, do you want us to vote on it as an amendment to be included, or can we just include it kind of at the end?
Staff, was part of the staff.
So the ag stuff, I was just thinking about making an infographic and including in it, and I didn't want to blow up the document by two more pages, but I wanted, that and the housing numbers, I did want to include, but then the resilience thing, yeah, I want you to, I want that in there.
Okay.
If you, if you choose.
Sure. Do you want that as an official motion?
Yep.
The, okay.
Yep, the resiliency part.
Yeah, that's important. Okay. Can I, would somebody like to?
I'd be happy to make a motion that we incorporate into the discussion on page nine of public, protecting public health and safety, a paragraph that is provided in the memo by the staff dated March 9, March 5, Missoula Area Mapping Update subject, for inclusion in the document. So that's sufficient, perfect.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Peter seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, Jamie?
Is it only that section, then, that we're voting on being included in the broader document? How about the housing section?
I, no, I like the housing section, too. I, we can, I can amend my motion, include all of this, or the essence of all of this. I didn't know if you'd really want to include all the ag detail in here.
The housing and soils thing, I wasn't intending to be included. I was including just the numbers. I was going to make an infographic and include the numbers from the housing and soils section. I wanted that the hazards and resiliency section included.
Verbatim.
Verbatim.
Unless you would like, I mean, we can.
I, well, I, could I make it friendly, I don't know if it's friendly or not, but accept Andrew's recommendation as to how to handle the information here.
Okay.
Sounds friendly.
So amended? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Andrew.
And Andrew, thanks for the housing info.
Of course, yeah. And then I think Christine might be better suited for this part than I.
So.
If you're ready.
Yeah, if we're feeling like we're ready for a overall motion. I, I don't know if we're ready, but you should pull it up. Okay, so we need to vote on basically the full package resolution to adopt the land use map, the element, with all of the amendments we've made, and the staff recommendations. So I guess before we go down that road, would anybody else like to make any amendments? And/or do we need to discuss anything else? Okay, great, thank you, Christine. Take it away.
Yeah, sure thing. And I would just recommend, too, maybe asking if anyone in the audience wanted to comment, excuse me, comment on any of the amendments after there's a second on the motion.
Like, open up the public hearing?
That's what.
Comments on the motion.
Oh, just comments on the motion?
Comments on the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, yeah, we have that text here. It's a staff-recommended motion to accept the land use area, the Missoula Area Land Use Map and Element, according to changes you made tonight and the staff report that you saw three months ago.
Okay, would anybody like to take a stab at making the motion for the resolution?
I can try.
Okay, Peter.
Okay, I would like to make a motion.
Can you speak into the mic, just for the record?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the land use map and element, be it resolved at the Missoula Area Land Use Map and Element, as shown in attachments A and A1, and as amended by the plant, by us, the Planning Board. We recommend it to the Missoula Board of County Commissioners for adoption as an amendment to the Missoula County Growth Policy, based on the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Would anyone like to second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? And I guess at this point, I will pause and see if anyone from the audience has any comments on the motion as proposed, public or staff. Okay, any comments from the Planning Board?
And as this is read, it includes all the staff recommendations that were in the big.
Includes staff recommendations and all the amendments we made tonight.
Just one final shout-out of appreciation to the CAP staff for the really great work on this, and your approach to it has been really commendable, and I really appreciate it. But I think maybe we should spend another meeting going through some more of it, because Andrew doesn't want to finish tonight.
I'm hearing the continuation.
I'm totally joking. Call the question.
Okay.
I'd like to.
Yes, Peter.
I'd like to second this issue, but I've, I've spent some time questioning or worrying about particular parts of what you guys have presented, but, because I feel like it's part of my responsibility here to worry about some of this stuff. But I'd really like to underscore the value I place on the work that you have done, putting this together, and the outreach to the community. I think that we are incredibly well-served as a community by this piece. Thank you.
I would also like to express my appreciation, especially in light of the fact that we may have launched a slight political war with some people, so I just, I, I thank you for your patience with us, and, you know, hopefully we can come to a place of, you know, kind of healthy growth for Missoula County. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, I think we can just take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion as proposed, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you, that was epic. You guys did an amazing job, and I'd like to thank the city's planning staff for just suffering tonight. I apologize so much.
Yeah, Laval, I was going to say, if you want to push this to the next meeting.
Not at this point.
Oh, yeah, now?
Now. Thank you, folks. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have, yeah, no. Next, we have a special presentation by Jen Grass and Laval Means on the City Growth Policy Prioritization Actions Monitoring Report.
This is Laval Means, and I did want to ask if you guys have it in you to go another 20, 25 minutes to give you an update on our actions. If not, we can push it to another meeting, a couple more weeks out. I know you've got two more items on the next meeting, but I just want to.
Well, we're all here, and I would say, let's just push through, but plan to adjourn no later than 11:30, or 10:30, sorry. Does that give you enough time? Oh, okay. All right, well, let's wrap up by 11:00. How about that?
So, and this is a report?
This is a special presentation. Yep.
So we don't have to decide anymore?
Correct.
Thanks for waiting around, you guys.
All right. Good evening, I am Jen Grass with Development Services, and as.
Jen, can you speak into the mic a little bit more, please?
I'm not doing a good job with that. And as stated, this is an update to the city growth policy, and in the interest of time, I'm just going to read through this, so forgive me for not having any contact with you. So, again, this is a discussion for the Armisula Prioritize Action Themes. It's an informational item only, we don't require any action by the board. So in November of 2015, the City Council approved a resolution adopting the Armisula City Growth Policy 2035. Within the document was a requirement to monitor progress and effectiveness of the growth policy implementation on a regular basis. The report is meant to be used by decision-makers and the public to assess headway made toward achieving the plan's goals and vision. The report will also be used to determine needs for adjusting priorities and strategies, and updating the plan during its 20-year lifecycle. So the next full update of the document is anticipated to occur in 2020. So before I go through the prioritize actions, I'll provide you with some background on how the actions were established. The plan is organized into six element chapters, which address the many community assets and challenges identified during the outreach and listening stages of the project. Within the six elements, there are overlapping issues such as affordable housing, and some broad concepts that relate to all of the elements. Each of the six element chapters was addressed by an individual focus group and chapter of the plan. Each of the element chapters address more specific principles with goals, objectives, and actions to provide guidance for future decisions. There are general descriptions of a topic, a number of specific goals and objectives to forward the topic, and lastly, specific implementation actions that can be taken to accomplish the goals. These are referenced as numbers in the element chapter, but send you to the actions and outcomes chapter for more information. The actions and outcomes chapter lays out all the potential actions. The larger list of actions is divided based on the various methods of implementation. They range from best practices to incentives, from studies to zoning, and even legislation. However, so many action items and multiple themes emerged in the larger list, that the steering committee established a smaller list of high-priority action items called the prioritized action themes. And it's that group of actions that we're going to be focusing on tonight. The prioritized actions are grouped differently, based on common themes, which we call communities. And these seven themes will be addressed in the following slides, and will include information on actions that have been taken to forward them. We gave you a cover memo, along with the monitoring report itself. The report consists of a brief description of how implementation of the prioritized actions are occurring, and a summary report card that is even more brief, and uses icons to give you a quick assessment of how implementation is going. So again, the report card attached to the monitoring report will give you a general idea of how each action is progressing, and uses these icons to give you that quick assessment of implementation for each action. As you can see, those actions with a check mark include items or projects that have been completed. And completion of a project doesn't mean that the action item will be removed from the list, it simply means that at least one project to forward the action item was started after adoption of the growth policy, and that specific project was completed. adoption of the growth policy, and that specific project was completed. Actions showing just a thumb up include new action items, but nothing has been completed. Something may have been updated, such as an existing regulation, or a project may have been started but is still in process. The sideways thumb means the action is continuing as it has without new actions taken, and the thumb down means no progress has been made at all. So these symbols will appear on the following slides, providing additional information. The next section of this presentation will go through each community theme and attempt to be even more brief than the report card. So the first prioritized action theme is quality community, and this theme's actions will support Missoula's strong sense of place. So there are eight actions under the quality community theme. A summary of each action and the number it corresponds to in the growth policy will be listed on the following slides. Slides also have a blue box listing specific projects that were implemented to forward a theme shown on that slide. The first action is to continue with fair and open-minded, excuse me, open community process. Public outreach continues through a variety of sources, including newspapers, digital media, regular mail, websites, and in-person contacts. Alternative transportation education and outreach continues to occur through organizations like Missoula in Motion, Missoula Public School District, the Let's Move Missoula Program, as well as various city organizations and plans. New sidewalks were funded and installed using CDBG funds. Staff and volunteer training for public safety issues is provided on a regular basis through organizations like Just Response, the City-County Health Department, and Missoula Public School District. The Office of Emergency Preparedness updated several plans, including the multi-year training and exercise plan. Missoula County Public Schools continues to educate their students and staff regularly regarding bullying and acceptance practices. Various entities continue to hold community workshops for different projects. Multiple meetings and workshops were held and are planned to be held for Missoula's most recent projects that include the Design Excellence Project, the Brook Street Corridor, and the Downtown Master Plan Update. The city continues to encourage the creation of public places, such as the Missoula Art Park in the downtown areas, and is currently in process of updating the Downtown Master Developing and updating neighborhood plans is on Development Services' work plan, but for now, the Downtown Master Plan is in process of being updated. A complete update to the Historic Preservation Plan has not begun, however, the update to the Downtown Master Plan will consider historic preservation issues. The next prioritized action theme is resilient community, and actions in this theme will improve the economic health of the community. The update to the Downtown Master Plan may help promote community assets. In addition, the Missoula Economic Partnership developed a targeted industry strategy for Missoula, and the Missoula Air Service Task Force has worked to encourage cheaper airline flights for the Missoula area. In the area of commercializing research ideas and promoting startup businesses, the University of Montana hosted several conferences, including Innovate UM and the annual John Ruffato Business Startup Challenge. The university also has plans to implement an innovation corridor across Missoula. The Missoula Economic Partnership launched a survey posing a number of questions exploring the broadband needs of area businesses in 2016. The Competitive Realities Report assessed broadband availability, and the Downtown Master Plan Update will provide broadband recommendations within the study area. Development Services regularly reaches out to the public through various avenues, including hosting a monthly development community meeting, and the city has launched its 2019 Local Government Citizens Academy. Encouraging carbon-neutral industries is one of the few items that hasn't been addressed at this time. The Hellgate Venture Network is collaborating with the Missoula Economic Partnership and the University of Montana Innovation and Entrepreneurialship Program, and this is to develop an innovation initiative to help nurture those businesses and entrepreneurs. And strategic redevelopment is being supported by the Missoula Redevelopment Agency through urban renewal projects. Development Services is creating an update to the UFTA project, and numerous street, trail, and sidewalk projects have been completed. The third priorities action item, excuse me, the third prioritized action theme is compact community, and actions here will support quality, compact, and connected urban development in specific areas. Mixed-use development and development close to existing infrastructure is being encouraged. The city council adopted the B3 and RM2 zoning districts, expanded districts allowing residential support services, and the adoption of Design Excellence Project includes incentives to promote development in areas where infrastructure already exists. Development Services is creating an UFTA suitability map as part of the UFTA Looking Forward Project and has provided transportation demand modeling. And to help incentivize and protect open space, Missoula has adopted the land use map and updated the general land use designations. It's updating the Parks and Open Space Master Plan and has supported a new open space bond. Continuing with the compact community theme, several city plans are used to evaluate project funding for improvements to infrastructure, and they include the Missoula Long-Range Transportation Plan, the Bicycle Facilities Master Plan, Complete Streets Policy, and the new Pedestrian Facilities Master Plan. Current policies that help reduce septic systems include Missoula City Sewer Regulations that require connection to public sanitary sewer in specific situations, adopted goals for groundwater protection by the Missoula County Health Board, and the UFTA Looking Forward Project, which supports the community goal of focus inward. Design standards for higher-density infill projects have been forwarded by the adoption of the Design Excellence Overlay. Projects helping to identify areas in the city for compact development include adoption of the land use map and Development Services' UFTA Looking Forward Project with its associated suitability map. In addition, creation of a city housing policy is currently underway. Development Services is in the process of developing an annexation policy as well. So the next prioritized action theme is sustainable community, and actions here will help us to mitigate and adapt to climate change. Actions helping monitor climate change include completion and implementation of the Community Climate Smart Action Plan and completion of the Community Emissions Inventory. A baseline greenhouse gas inventory was created and is in process of being updated, and a county-city climate resiliency plan is being developed. Climate Smart Missoula, Garden City Harvest, the Missoula Urban Demonstration Project, and the City-County Health Department all provide ongoing community education regarding best practices for locally-produced food, healthy food preparation, and ecologically Ongoing research, excuse me, outreach projects to the community regarding climate change include the River City Roots Festival, the Solarize Campaign, the Sustainable Missoula Column, and the Zero Waste Ambassadors Program. Climate Smart Missoula received a Bloomberg Award for Partners for Places to Help, excuse me, for Partners for Places, and that's to help support resiliency measures during changing summer conditions, which is also referred to as the Summer Smart Initiative. Missoula City adopted the Missoula Zero Waste Resolution and the Zero by 50 Program. Our Missoula City Fire Department helps educate the public regarding fire-prone areas by providing ongoing free defensible space consultations and being involved with the Ready, Set, Go program. And Missoula County adopted the 2018 update to the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Missoula City continues to promote conservation practices by hosting the Going Solar webpage and promoting the Zero Waste Program. City Council has directed staff to determine the feasibility of an incentive-based voluntary stretch energy building code, and the city has teamed up with other entities to investigate the potential for powering electric vehicle charging infrastructure with solar power. The Historic Preservation Officer is working on a proposed adaptive reuse historic character overlay. Additionally, the MRA established a demolition alternative policy and deconstruction guide, and Development Services created a deconstruction resource guide. The acquisition of Missoula Water has allowed the city to create sustainability goals regarding the city's water system, goals like improving well and booster pump systems, designing irrigation systems to be more efficient, and efforts continue to reduce system leakage. Climate Smart's resiliency plan is underway, and they will advocate for net metering at this year's state legislature for the third time. Affordable communities, the next prioritized action theme, and actions here will address the cost of housing in Missoula. Conversations and discussions regarding barriers to housing downtown have been and are included as part of the Missoula Making, Making Missoula Home Project, the Downtown Master Plan Update, and through the Housing and Community Development Office, which, by the way, I should note, is also a new action for the city since the plan was adopted. Through the creation of a housing policy, the Housing and Community Development Office is working with other city departments and community members to identify a host of financial tools aimed at promoting affordable housing. Rental assistance programs continue through the efforts of the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, the Rapid Re-Housing Program, and Homeward. Housing needs assessments are moving forward. The Downtown Master Plan Update will include a housing strategy for the downtown core, and the Making Missoula Home Housing Report was completed. Zoning tools to address affordable housing include adoption of the RM2 and B3 zoning districts into Title 20, as well as a relaxation of the accessory dwelling unit regulations. And the Housing and Community Development Office is working on a new housing policy. Development Services is creating the UFTA Looking Forward Project, which will inform future planning processes by identifying suitable and opportune areas for future residential development, and this data will also be helpful for the Housing and Community Development Action items for the accessible community theme will help develop a connected, safe, and accessible multimodal transportation system. The Metropolitan Planning Organization regularly reviews development projects, encouraging good design and safety, and the Transportation Policy Coordinating Committee adopted the Bicycle Facilities Master Plan and Pedestrian Facilities Master Plan. The Metropolitan Planning Organization is also working on an update to the Community Transportation Safety Plan. City agencies, including the Bicycle and Pedestrian Office, Missoula in Motion, and the Missoula Metropolitan Planning Organization, are active in implementing policies that reduce automobile dependence, and the Missoula in Motion Strategic Plan was approved. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Office, as well as Missoula in Motion, continue to reach out to the public with education through various platforms. Adoption of the Design Excellence Overlay includes a variety of standards that are aimed at enhancing pedestrian accessibility on-site, as well as improvements to the interface between private development and the public realm. The Long-Range Transportation Plan describes the resources and priorities for funding of transportation, transportation projects. The Missoula Redevelopment Agency is a resource and has implemented several transportation projects. The Pedestrian Facilities Master Plan will prioritize sidewalk needs and other pedestrian facilities by location. And the Missoula Metropolitan Planning Organization is actively seeking grants for several projects, including the Neighborhood Greenways. Mountain Line has updated their long-range strategic plan that will help to increase transit options and completed the Bus Stop Master Plan. And then creation of the Missoula City Public Works Standards and Specifications Manual is in process. And the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee has created a roundabout first policy, which is currently waiting for the city council consideration. The last prioritized action theme is natural community. Action items in this theme will address the unique characters of Missoula. Supplemental food programs continue to support SNAP participants and seniors. Impacts on our water are being addressed through the city's creation of the Storm Water Division, along with education and outreach by the Missoula Valley Water Quality District and their adoption of the Watershed Restoration Plan. Title 20 currently allows garden areas to be counted toward required activity areas for specific multi-dwelling houses and multi-dwelling buildings. The Parks and Recreation Department has acquired parcels along the River Corridor, and the city has plans to remove the dam and restore Rottlesnake Creek. In addition, the Parks and Recreation Department is partnering with others to develop a river access plan, and they've conducted a river use survey.
Is that for the park?
I am assuming yes. I believe so. The Missoula Invest Health Initiative provides a new resource for consideration of ways to support connectivity and healthy environments in our low-wealth neighborhoods, and the Missoula Redevelopment Agency completed several projects, including the Bitterroot Trail Project and Montana Rail Link Park. And lastly, adoption of the growth policy included adoption of the land use map, which helped identify appropriate areas by use, and includes an urban agricultural overlay. And now, I'm gonna turn the mic over to Lavelle, who will summarize some conclusions for you. Hi again, Lavelle Means with the Planning Office. And that was a quick snapshot of the high-priority actions, and I think what you can take away from that is there's been a lot going on. There's really only a couple that we haven't found that there's a, an action related to an action moving forward. A lot of the actions, the way they're written, are pretty multifaceted. So while you can find, and there are things that are being done to address them, there's still more that we can do. So, you know, this has been a really great exercise for us to assess what we've been up to and how we're moving elements forward, and it also starts to help us set up thoughts for the next couple of years. We have to do a review of the growth policy within about five years, so in a couple of years, we really will be coming back with another assessment. I think we can learn from this tier of actions with regards to how are we, is it, are these the, is this the right tier? What are we doing related to the rest of the actions, all that kind of stuff? So we'll be able to do a more deeper dive. You could probably also tell from all the information that was provided that there are some common themes and keys, areas of progress that we've been working towards, and I think they fall under the category of the regulatory ones, where we've been making some changes from zoning perspectives and being responsive in different ways that we can with the resources we have, to making changes to help address those concepts, especially related to focusing inward. A lot of work has been done through other sections, Chase Jones and the work with the county as well on climate change and outreach and education, but now we're really excited about the work that'll be happening on a climate resiliency plan. Transportation planning, we talked a lot about the several different issue-based plans that they've had adopted, update to the long-range transportation plan, along with the more focused bike and pedestrian ones. And so there, and they set mode-split goals, which is something we had talked about, asking it to be a piece of the long-range transportation plan. So that creates sort of a cycle for us to come back to and look at in our next steps. The Downtown Master Plan is one of the focus planning efforts that's now going on, and we've also had the design standards approved through the Design Excellence Project. The housing policy work is another key theme in what's been happening and what's going forward. And then, we've really kept some momentum...
And then, we've really kept some momentum going on what we call the Invest Health Initiative, and that is a resource and a way to really talk about health in our built environment and how they relate together. So even though the grant had ended, we continue to work with a broader community and talk about ways that health can play a part, and like right now, we're focusing a little bit more on housing. So those are progress, key progress items. And then, just to kind of give you a heads up or an idea of what our next tier of actions are and how this rolls over, like I said, into the next couple of years, you're going to be hearing more about the housing policy work, I think, shortly, and we're hearing more and working with them in terms of the recommendations that they'll be making. But it's going to come with some expectation for implementation, so that'll be on our plate. UFTA, which you'll hear more about in the next few months, I think, is going to be talking about, we're looking at the Looking Forward projection of housing guidance, housing location, and opportunities as you think about the area around our city. And then, we're working on an annexation policy. The Downtown Master Plan will be going through a process pretty quickly, so, you know, like within the year, we would hope to be able to have that approved. We haven't done a lot on neighborhood plans yet.
Sorry, quick question, Lavelle. Some of these, kind of, the Downtown Master Plan, the Annexation Plan, are those going to come to Planning Board just for review or comment?
I don't think that the Annexation Policy would, but the UFTA will. We'll be talking to you about it. It'll be, it does, I don't think it requires a resolution of support again, but we'll be coming with, to you for comment. The Downtown Master Plan would be coming up probably as an attachment to the growth policy, so yes, it will be coming before you for a more formal review.
Well, I guess this is maybe just speaking for myself and others pipe in. I would be really interested in hearing about, you know, like the Annexation Plan or the Historic Preservation Guidelines, just as a special presentation even, like even if the board doesn't need to take an action.
Yeah, okay.
You know, we have to make decisions that include all of these new policies, and so just having that kind of one-on-one with you or someone from your team to talk about it would be great.
I concur.
So we know how to use it, you know.
We need to get back to looking at neighborhood plans in general and how to update and/or retire some, et cetera, and we haven't been able to get that onto our work plan yet, but I'm hoping that that's, that this is in the next year or so, we'll be able to work on that more. There's the cycle we've talked about with transportation and county land use of transportation and land use really coordinating together more, and I think we're going to be able to do that with the timing of their next long-range transportation plan and our growth policy plan. So I think you'll see more about how those line up together, and the same with city and county and our community coordination. And then, you know, the Missoula Invest Health Initiative will keep coming forward with other projects and support, and then the Climate Resiliency Plan will be a key thing, because that was one of the things from the past Planning Board members, was the interest in being able to identify metrics for climate change that have something to do with and feed into some of the land use decisions that we make. So those are some of the heads up of either continuation or next things to see coming forward in the next couple of years before it's the full-on growth policy review and the next process.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Lavelle?
I do. So I'd love to hear more about the metrics and quantifiable goals, and when, you know, when and if you should keep quantifiable information and when it's not valuable. Also, sort of a triage of the different things that are in your office and what you think and how the importance of one or the other changes. You know, so as you start looking at your goals, the tasks that you're setting yourself, you know, look here is something that is a small investment that has a huge reward, and this is why we think it's worth investing time and effort in. Or look here, we have succeeded in increasing the number of people on the buses by 30% in the last year.
We can work on that, and I think you might see a little bit of that with the UFTA Looking Forward, like sort of setting up a baseline for more metrics to come. The number of action items that we have in the growth policy, not, I mean, this is, this is the prioritized one, but the larger set makes it really hard to do some of that, but I sure hear what you're saying about trying to be more performance-measured based.
And I hate to be the first to comment on that, because I know that there are valuable back-earner efforts that really increase, you know, the community, the value of the community.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Dudley, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Leva.
Thanks. You guys have been busy doing a lot of work. Thank you very much. One question I have is regarding the, sort of, some rezoning in the city that, because it's come up a bunch here, we get these particular, you know, requests to rezone a particular parcel, and we've talked with you guys in the past about trying to do a more concerted effort on that, and I, you know, in terms of redo, rezoning particular areas rather than do parcel by parcel. And I guess I'm wondering where that piece is, and also, does that, how does that relate to the neighborhood plan? Do you do like a neighborhood plan and then do rezoning, or are they totally separate? Or, do you see what I'm asking?
Sure, I do. We're going to look to guidance from the housing policy recommendations, for one thing, in terms of what is going to be most helpful for moving the needle on affordable housing. And so that's, I'm saying that because that's kind of some of the broader aspects of zoning and zoning changes. But when it comes to when we do, whether we do some proactive rezoning of areas, I think that it is something that would be a follow-up from neighborhood planning, from a more focused neighborhood planning. We have such broad land uses right now, and, you know, that was a goal, to be general and to be broad about it. It makes it hard to know what would be the appropriate land use or zoning to find a match for, you know? I don't want to work with an assumption that that zoning should be the highest and best. There's a range of different options, and, you know, so that's why I think you need to be in a neighborhood planning process for it. And then, of course, it needs to be with the support of people participating, and the best way to do that is to follow up from some form of specific planning, neighborhood planning, with the intention to implement it with zoning. So sometimes, you know, you might, it might be something that we could contemplate with the master planning concept that the county was just talking, you know, the certain areas where I've heard they're interested in being proactive about it. So if we can do it together, and we can do it hand-in-hand, and we can do it right after having, you have the momentum, basically, after having gone through neighborhood planning, then it might be something that we could contemplate. But we, you know, really believe strongly in there are options out there, and development and a property owner needs to be considered and a part of the conversation, and we need to get direction from city council as to whether they're ready to go that step. But we did rezone SD2 with your help, so.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Dudley, did you want to?
All right, I have a comment, and I don't want anybody to take it personally. This is why I'm not a good bureaucrat, is this comment. This is really mostly positive stuff, and you only mentioned it briefly in here, and I'm just going to go on the record. But you only mentioned, very briefly, about Destination Missoula, Target Industry Strategy for Missoula, and the Missoula Air Service Task Force. So throughout the document, you talk about carbon-neutral lifestyle, and all that stuff's good, and addressing climate change. Yep. Putting a lot of energy into bringing more airline flights in. Airline flights have been reported to account for 11% of the carbon emissions in the United States. So I hate to bring that up, but it was just like in my, you know, it's in the document. We got a lot of good stuff going on, and, you know, but we should at least own what we are doing, you know, as with tourism as an industry, and it's not pollution-free. And think about it, as we keep pushing Missoula as a destination resort, what things we're changing there. By and large, all this stuff's super positive, and I appreciate you mentioning, you know, addressing climate change and trying to get the carbon-neutral stuff going throughout the city and more solar and all that, you know? That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dudley. Other comments or questions? Yes, Stephanie?
Again, I'll applaud your efforts, too. This is really informative and generally really positive. One thing that I, that stood out to me a lot was how it really is sort of approaching it as our community, not just what the city is doing, but what partnerships the city is pursuing, and I think that that's great, and the only way we're ever going to get all these things done. And that being said, I saw that there were also some areas in here where some partnerships that the city has aren't getting mentioned, and that, like I was, I noticed that you had the ongoing thumb for the increasing opportunities for SNAP participants, and over this time period, CFAC has worked with a group of different partners in the area to bring the Double SNAP Dollars Program to Missoula, which has greatly increased the amount of access for SNAP recipients. And then, Garden City Harvest and Missoula Urban Demonstration Project do excellent work around sustainability education, and I would also be happy to provide you with a list of other organizations that are doing that same work on city lands and with city partnerships and all sorts of things. So, yeah, I think that this says a lot of things we're doing in our community, and I think there's also others who are also contributing to meeting these goals, so it probably doesn't even capture everything we're doing. So, yeah, nice work.
Yes?
And I appreciate your bringing those points up. I just wanted to mention that if you, those particular things are probably not in the report card, but I think if you look in the larger document, in particular, I remember the Double SNAP being mentioned, so. But, yeah, I appreciate those bringing, bringing forward. If you have more, let me know.
Just from, from somebody who works in the nonprofit side of things, it's so helpful for us to then justify the work when the city mentions that we do things, and then helps us to be able to do more of it, too. So I can send you guys some more information, too, if you'd like.
Other comments or questions from the board? Any parting words, ladies?
All right, so, thank you for making a point that this isn't, this is, this wasn't city action. You know, we're just a small part of it, but this is really the compilation of efforts from the community and everything that gets done. And I was so impressed when the plan was first adopted and before much, you know, really got underway, there was work being done on zero waste. I think the Zero Waste Resolution was, you know, starting to take shape. So it is a lot about other people, participating, other people working towards actions, and Jen and our office has been doing just a lot of work to try to compile it together, and no, we're not the experts, but it's been, it's been, I think, eye-opening to go through the exercise as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving through our agenda, folks, do we have any committee reports? Nope, any old business? Dudley, did you have some? You already addressed it, new business? Anything? Comments? I thank all of you for sticking around and for your conviction and candor this evening, so thank you so much. We are adjourned.
Good job. Helen?